Director Session for the Board of Education here in Washington Township. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Some housekeeping before we get started during the public comment section to the left is some blue yellow cards where they on the podium. So if you wish to speak during public comment section, make sure you fill out your card and hand up to Stacy Demay over here at the end of the aisle here. All right. All right. So the first item for us is going to be Jack introduction to student.
On behalf, on behalf of our Board of Education, I enthusiastically introduce and welcome Angela DeChilla to her new role as our Washington Township Public Schools Student Board Member. This initiative in the state of New Jersey became a requirement of all Boards of Education, starting with the 22, 23 school year. Recently, a full nomination process was administered at Washington Township High School and an official voting process by the student body took place with Angelina receiving the most votes thereby being elected to this position. We are thrilled to have Angelina join our Board of Education team. Although a non-voting member of the Board in its composition, I know fully that Angelina's input will be highly valued and welcome within the myriad of discussion, decision-making, planning, and challenges that our Board of Education moves through this year and the significant work the Board conducts throughout this school year ahead. At this time, our solicitor Ari Schneider will administer Angelina Chilla's Student Board Oath.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
In your role as our Student Board Member, do you agree to adhere to all Washington Township Public School bylaws, policies, and regulations of the Board of Ed for the mutual benefit of the Board, student body, and the school district?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Angelina. Welcome to the team. All right. At this time, we'll have our first presentation, the elementary presentation given by the district's elementary supervisors. They present.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Christine Garringer. I'm one of the elementary supervisors and I'm joined this evening with my colleagues Samantha Delude and Janine Ryan, who are also supervisors and Sam's actually an interim principal for us right now. I'm happy to be here this evening to share with you a summer program that we've been running at the elementary for two years now. And I know sometimes when you hear summer school, it has negative intitations or connotations. It sounds punitive or like you're being punished, but nothing can be further from the truth. Our summer program that we offer our elementary students has been amazing. Our students have thrived both academically, socially, and emotionally as a result of being part of this wonderful opportunity. At the end of the sessions, the end of the weeks of participating, the students actually are crying because they don't want to leave. They want to come back and they're going to miss their friends. And parents have come up to us so many times and said that their children really enjoyed the opportunity to learn with their peers in a really fun and engaging way. And they made friends and they had playdates and on top of all the academic achievement that we find from the program, it's had so many other benefits. So I'm excited to be here this evening so we can share with you a little bit about our program. On the next slide is just a bar graph sharing with you the parents that chose to take advantage of this opportunity to participate in the program. We offer it in all six of our elementary schools for rising first through sixth grade students. We're just going to share with you a little bit this evening about each of the programs that we run because we differentiate depending on the age of the children. The first program I'm going to share with you this evening is it's called our Beable Literacy and Math Summer Program. And this is for our rising fourth and fifth grade students. This is an exciting program. It's engaging and it works with nonfiction texts. The children have daily lessons that they read. We have embedded assessments so we can progress monitor their achievement and it's individualized and personalized and the children really find it exciting because they can show themselves the growth that they're making as well as their teachers. The goals of this program are to accelerate literacy growth through nonfiction. And what the students do is they begin with like a short video prompting them to envision what they would like to be one day. So it focuses on careers and nonfiction along with strengthening their literacy skills. There's a series of assessments embedded in inventories and surveys so that the student's progress and their achievement continually is monitored throughout the program. The other goal we have is that the children take this RIASEC survey. And RIASEC stands for Realistic Investigative Artistic, Social, Enterprising, and Conventional. And there are different career paths in which one can emerge as they grow up and they go on to be an adult. So what it does is it exposes them to these different career paths. And then the students answer questions to kind of figure out which path at this point in their lives they're interested in. And then they set academic goals, career goals, and then it measures their Lexile reading levels. This next slide just shares a little bit about the summer curriculum in that it's not just about academics. It's about outdoor activities, career exploration, social emotional development, family and community building, and also their literacy skills are developed. This slide, it's a little difficult to see, but basically it goes through the different areas of career exploration for our summer program. And the first week was realistic doers. And it talks about traits where you work with machines, tools, plants, animals, and then the different careers that are related to being a realistic doer. The next week, they went into investigative thinkers and it has the traits that are associated with that and as well as the careers. And it continues each week in the same pattern where we learned about the artistic creators, social helpers, enterprising persuaders, and organizational conventional organizers. And it's very interesting to see at this age how children tend to gravitate towards one area or another. And even as adults, it's an interesting survey to take to see where we are on the RIASEC. There is a curriculum that we follow and this keeps it consistent across all the schools where the children participated in the program. And it includes an SEL opening, core reading, daily activities. It also, like I said, closes with SEL and then the family connection. And we do make sure the children do activities outside of using the digital platform because as we all know, we don't want the children on their computers all summer long. So we have a nice balance of the children using the digital literacy along with outside engaging activities, working with their peers. And you'll see later in the presentation, some pictures of the kids having fun with their classmates. This slide just goes into a little bit about how we use discussion and writing, areas of financial literacy, career development, social emotional learning. There's collaborative activities and we also integrated book clubs, which allowed students to actually have a book in their hand, talking about reading and literacy, which is very critical. The teachers are required to progress monitor students throughout the program. And through this progress monitoring, the program adjusts for each individual student so that they continue to strive and they move forward and there's continual growth. So no matter where they came in with the program, they continue to grow and emerge as readers. These are just a few of the pictures of the children this summer that we captured them having fun. One of the things was a marshmallow challenge. They had to design a theme park ride and they really just really had a great time collaborating and making friends. Here are some additional pictures of the children. They were very proud of their creations. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague and she's going to share with you the program that we have for our rising first, second, and third graders.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. Tonight I'm going to speak to you about our summer lit math, our math and literacy camp that we had this summer. The focus was building a love of reading and in a fun and exciting way. We had it organized by a camp-like theme. Students came into the program where they were able to set up their campsites with actually little tents that you will see in some pictures as we move forward through the slides. There was a whole schedule for our students and the camp-like theme was the focus was for them to have a space for them to be able to independent read and to work collaboratively with their peers. Students loved this, this part of the program as you'll see in some of our photos. The area that we loved mostly was our bunk time. And the focus of the program was on our seven strengths, which is the character traits that the program focused on. The books that are around these seven strengths were very engaging and motivating for our students, especially during these times of coming off the pandemic. The students really, really engaged in the learning of those seven strings. Here are our seven strings. I'm not going to read them. They're our character traits that we did focus on throughout the summer. And then the next few slides, I believe, are pictures of our program. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Janine Ryan and she's going to talk about the math portion of the program.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's well. Thank you Board for having us. It's a pleasure to be here. So in both the Beable and the Literacy Camp for our incoming first through fifth graders, there was also a math component that went along with it. And our math component went along with the philosophy of a balance between hands-on and some digital exposure as well. So students participated in targeted math reinforcement through two ways, something we call Smore Math, which was just a bank of resources that I created based upon feedback from teachers and our BSI staff as to what the kids might need. And they all had Smore and camp-themed games and activities so that the kids thought they were very fun and really wanted to play along. The second was the Zern Summer Series. Zern Math is a supplemental part of our math program, which supports our core math program, which is Eureka Math Squared. And what it does is it's, it's digital lessons that are one adaptive, which is great because that means that they are differentiated. As kids make mistakes, more support is given and as they do well, more difficult questions are then presented to the kids. And also it serves as a second exposure. Did I say that? I said that already to what they did in the classroom. I'm sorry. Can you go back for just one second? Thank you. All right. So for the summer series, what the company did was they did research on billions of problems to see where kids made the most mistakes. And they also researched what would be foundational or needed for the next year. And so to target their summer series, we told or had teachers give very specific types of lessons to build that foundational knowledge to help those kids to be successful with the grade level material. So Gretchen, you can go to the next one, please. So for our rising first graders, that's counting, second graders, it's place value, third graders, it's addition and subtraction, and so forth. We had a really great response to this program, both from the teachers as well as the students. And I know the students did do a little work outside of the camp to, to kind of reinforce what they were learning in the classroom as well. So the next few slides are just some more pictures of our summer lit and math camps. You can see the tent set up as we talked about. They're independently reading. Campfires were set around the room. Fake, yes. And then finally, we did ask some students for a little feedback about what they thought about our summer programs. So we'll let them take it away. She, she is better than ever. Thank you very much.
Kudos, kudos to you ladies. Just one second, we have a certificate for you. Congratulations to you and your teams. That's all about you redefined summer school. So it's all about impact. So thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you. We had a parent come up and speak to how wonderful the program was as well. So I think it's district-wide. Thank you.
We love that feedback. Thanks so much.
No, I love it. Becky's, she's a better person now. I love that she is. All right. I'm going to go ahead and read this. In proud recognition of your presentation to the Washington Township Board of Education on the district's very successful summer literacy and math camps, programming provided participating students with tailored paths to build reading proficiency and reinforce math skills. We applaud your creativity and refocusing student learning through collaborative, engaging, hands-on activities that promoted teamwork and cooperation. So thank you. Christine?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Samantha?
Yes, thank you very much.
And Janine?
I'm kidding. Oh, my God, my goodness. That's me.
I have one for Beth also. Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask Melissa Barnett and Madeline Kubick to come up with a Spark presentation. Thank you. While we're waiting, Catherine, if you want to do the school and community relations report?
Sure, sure. All right. I'm going to give my report very quickly so we have a couple moments to get the presentation up on the board. So Meet the Candidates. The Washington Township Presidents Council will sponsor the 2020-22 Meet the Candidates Forum moderated by Janet Fisher Hughes from the League of Women's Voters in Camden County in the Eileen Abbott Central Administration Boardroom, 206 East Holly Avenue, on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The event will introduce the 11 petitioners seeking five available seats on the Washington Township Board of Education. The program will be recorded in its entirety and aired on WTTV, which is Channel 9 on Comcast and Channel 36 on Verizon. In the weeks preceding the November 8th school board election, Washington Township High School will host its 22nd Annual Spirit Parade and Homecoming Crowning on Friday, October 21st, 2022, beginning at 5:00 PM at the Tom Brown Field. The event being organized by the school's junior senior class council will be held rain or shine. Football will follow versus Clearview High School at 7:00 PM. The homecoming court will be introduced at halftime of the game and the homecoming queen will be crowned. We look forward to seeing you at homecoming. Looking to resume biannual inductions to the Washington Township High School Military Hall of Honor, following several ceremony cancellations during the pandemic, the district again is seeking nominations. Currently, 190 WTHS graduates or honorary inductees who have served or are currently serving their country through military service are enshrined in the Hall of Honor. A formal induction ceremony for the 2023 inductees is scheduled for Washington, or I'm sorry, is scheduled for Wednesday, May 31st, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Washington Township High School. Washington Township High School graduates or their families are invited to submit a five-by-seven colored photo of their honorary in uniform. Please include on the back of the photo the inductee's name, year of graduation from WTHS, branch of service, and military rank, and please forward that photo along with a copy of the honorable discharge paperwork or current military identification to the Eileen Abbott Central Administration Building, care of Jane Gill, at 206 East Holly Ave in Soul, New Jersey. The submitted photo will be displayed in the Military Hall of Honor upon receipt and the family will be invited to a formal induction ceremony next spring. And again, we are indebted to members of the Washington Township Education Foundation, who recently voted to award 23 mini-grants to district applicants totaling more than $32,000. The money is financed supplemental and engaging programming and enhanced classroom lessons at all levels. We hope to be profiling some of these innovating activities that were founded through the WTEF's generosity throughout the upcoming year. And finally, if you're looking to join the WTPS Equity Council, please click the link found on the September DEIB newsletter that is posted on the district website for next steps to become an official member. Please note that you will be provided with three four-hour equity foundational training sessions to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Kath. Spark, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Melissa Barnett. I am privileged to be the ELA supervisor for the middle schools and the high school. I consider it an honor and a privilege to work here. Thank you very much for that position. And with me is Maddie Kubick. She is one of the middle school ELA teachers. She currently works at Bunker Hill Middle School. Tonight, we're going to share with you our middle-level summer learning program. We, we had the challenge of trying to pull middle schoolers out of bed in the middle of summer for three hours a day for four weeks. So we were grateful to be able to work with some of the children in the community this summer. So our program's called Spark. It stands for Summer Program to Accelerate and Reinforce Knowledge. I'd like to just give you a little bit of the background and thank you to my colleagues from the elementary schools. The supervisors that spoke before gave you a little bit of insight into some of the programs that we used as well for the middle school students. So what we ran this summer was a four-week in-person and virtual skill-building program where we wanted to really focus on supporting academics as well as fostering a love of learning similar to the elementary level. Why we wanted to run this program is to be able to solidify and accelerate literacy and math skills so that students would have a successful start to a new school year, develop relationships with their peers, and have some fun learning. The way we designed the program was to include targeted instruction, skill practice, hands-on activities. We used Beable Literacy as well. We had math activities, character development, executive functioning games, and celebrating their growth. These are the components of the program. We focused on ELA and math, ELA primarily with Beable, as well as independent choice reading. We supported the students in selecting their summer reading books and we worked with them to build their stamina. For math, we utilized iExcel as well as a slew of application activities. Our community building focus was to really just help them to feel like they had a sense of belonging, to feel valued and supported. And then, of course, all the fun with the hands-on activities with lots of goodies and treats and marshmallows and sticks. So that really helped. This slide here, just to give you some information by numbers, we had 27 enrolled sparklers, we called them. They met for 16 sessions. We had 16 days of in-person instruction, three hours per day. Some stats on our reading, during their time in the Beable Reading Program, they also completed the RIASEC survey and it looked at their strengths, their interests, their values, and they progressed and accomplished reading a total of 667 articles and lessons. And we conducted a parent survey and a student survey at the end of the program and the percentage of parents that were surveyed who would recommend Spark to other families was 100%. We were able to take a look at our Spark participants and those students complete an assessment, a progress monitoring assessment every year in the fall, winter, and spring. So what this data shows you is that in the spring of 2022, the students that participated in Spark had an average Lexile score of 641. We just finished up our fall assessment and we took a look at those same students that were in the program and the average score was 738 Lexile points. The growth over four months between spring and fall was 97 Lexile points. And just to give you an understanding, the expected growth for a middle school student over the course of one full year is 70 Lexile points. So we were really, really proud to see the success of these students when typically during the summer, if many of you have heard of what's called the summer slide, students typically fall back a little bit to start a new school year. Well, our students certainly didn't. We actually had some students that climbed about 200 Lexile points from spring to fall.
And our goal was really to create this joyful learning experience for our students, but I have to say, as an educator, it was truly a joyful teaching experience. It was so fun every day when we were there with the kids. We did so many hands-on activities. We did race walking and we measured our data. We grafted with sidewalk talk outside. We used candy. Students had a chance to design many things like a bedroom, their own monopoly boards. We even planned an obstacle course for our final day where the students actually made their obstacle course and were able to execute that as our final celebration, which was really amazing. Two other key components of our program, we really wanted to keep the parents informed. So every week, we sent out a weekly newsletter. That's an example of one that you'll see up there. We talked about our work in math and literacy and our hands-on block. We also gave families some suggested questions that they could talk to their students about and of course, we added in some photos. At the end of the program, every student received a certificate of achievement at our award ceremony on the final day of the program. And on the screen now, you'll see all the program facilitators. Something that was really unique in this experience was that not only was I working with middle school ELA teachers, I had the chance to collaborate and work with some staff from the high school, which is something that we don't typically get to do at the middle level. And it was really amazing to have the chance to talk to them and find out what they were noticing about the skills that their students at the high school level needed help with that sometimes were the same as our students at the middle level. So we also have a video that we will show you, which compiles- We also have a video that we will show you, which compiles many of those hands-on activities, many of the activities that were mentioned in the previous slide, if you would like to navigate to that. I think you'll need to exit the presentation.
You can turn that off, thank you. One of the things that we didn't plan for, I wanted to share before we wrap it up, we designed it with academics in mind as well as social and emotional learning, but to really see what the impact it had on students and the families and the responses was unexpected. And we really are grateful for the board for supporting this program, because what it did for the students that participated is immeasurable. So, thank you for that, and we have one more piece. So, we actually have one of our students here this evening who would like to share a few words about her experience with you. So, Maya, if you'd like to come up.
My name is Maya Doctorman. At first, when I came to Spark, I was like, ugh, now I have to do work, even though I just came out of school. But I was wrong, because there are so many reasons why this place is amazing. I love Spark for so many reasons. The teachers taught us, one of the things is to stay strong and always be positive thoughts, no matter what. My favorite activities at Spark is the obstacle course, because it's so fun seeing your friends break together, and you can try the obstacle course yourself, too. I love seeing my new friends, and I love seeing my new teachers. Spark is a wonderful memory, because there are so many things Spark is about. Spark has led me to leadership and wonderful friends and great teachers. I thought I wouldn't fit in, because I've been remote for a while. I was on vacation, and my sister has been there before me. But when I came in, I knew I could fit in just fine. I mean, hey, what can I say? I do got a pretty big mouth. I mean, it's true. But you know what? Just remember, whenever you're feeling down, you can always count on someone. And remember, there's no way you can ever forget this moment, because this moment's wonderful. Oh, one more thing, always be you.
Natalie?
Thank you.
Ladies, just one second. We want to present you with something from the board. Nice job, Maya.
Thanks again. That progress was amazing. That's amazing.
In proud recognition of your presentation to the Washington Township Board of Education on the district's Summer Spark Program, Summer Program to Accelerate and Reinforce Knowledge, which reignited an interest in learning and fun for selected middle school students through a four-week program of English Language Arts, Math, and Socialization enrichment, we applaud your organization and delivery of the program, which was met with positive feedback and tremendous success. Sorry. The word goes to Melissa Barnett.
Thank you.
And not only feedback. Thank you, ladies. Congratulations.
Ms. Barnett?
Ms. Barnett, do you have questions? Yeah. One of the most impressive things about the program that struck me is that over a period of four weeks or 60 hours, the impressive gains that the kids made. Did you say there was 27 students in the program?
Yes, 27. Most of them were in-person. A few chose virtual only.
Okay, so the 27 was over the three middle schools?
Correct.
Okay, and the 27 that started stayed throughout the program?
Correct.
That's a real small number of kids based on our three middle schools.
Correct.
I certainly hope this is something that can continue, to see the kind of gains that they made in a short period of time. I think we want to replicate that.
Absolutely.
And that's a good use of summertime.
Absolutely.
So, hopefully, we're going to be able to go further with that.
We hope, as that was the first year, that we will absolutely be able to expand that. We did invite quite a few families, and we know that transportation was an issue for many families, so we did the survey of the parents that did participate to see if we can maybe grow that in the future.
Yeah, that's a good question. How many people were initially offered this program?
Approximately 365.
How many?
Approximately 365.
Okay. All right, well, maybe we can help out with the transportation. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, I agree 100%. I mean, that progress is amazing, and Stacy, maybe we can take that up in instructional affairs to see about how we apply the lessons learned.
Well, I was wondering if they were using that program during intervention periods or anything like that with the basic skills program in the middle school, but we can talk about during IA. That was on my list.
I had a question for Mrs. Gerber. I guess she left, maybe they're taking a picture. I'll ask her later.
All right. And Maya, just so you know, we'll have her certificate for you as well, so the superintendent's working on that, all right, for presenting tonight. Thank you. And finally, the last presentation for this evening is going to be given by Dr. Bill Adams. Dr. Adams represents Hazard, Young, Attia &amp; Associates, which was the consulting firm that the board hired for the superintendent's search. Dr. Adams, I know last week, there were some questions from the board regarding the stakeholder survey that would deploy at the beginning of October, so that's why we kind of asked you to come here today, and maybe you can kind of shed some light on that for us.
Well, Dr. Ellis, what you didn't tell me was I was going to have to go on after Maya. So, that's tough. I have a granddaughter named Maya as well, and I would like to, before we take questions, acknowledge the student representative who will be with us now for this important task of selecting the successor superintendent. And very, very proud, I know your parents are, and I wanted to tell you, my sons went to high school with your parents, and none of us had this kind of leadership opportunity, so I know you're going to do a great job.
Any specific questions for Dr. Adams from the board, or did you want to kind of just give us a little background on the survey? And I know there were some inquiries coming back and forth via email this past week.
Yeah, it would probably be a good way to catch everyone up, and in full transparency, I think, especially with a large number here, for people to understand the process that will be available for input in the superintendent's search. We met the Board of Education and my partner and senior associate at HYA, Stacy Adams, who also happens to be a life partner, with the board on July 20th. And at that time, we had a planning meeting. At the planning meeting, we discussed a research-based survey that Hazard, Young, and Attia has used in literally hundreds of school districts across the country. When we discussed that, we presented some results from the survey and some documents, but the actual survey had not been in total presented to the committee. When we began the process for intake, which will begin on October 3rd, where the community will have an input for a number of focus groups, interviews will take place, several town hall meetings that are planned, we sent out some information that we thought would include the survey at least link, so that we could promote that to get as much transparency as possible. Since then, after the courtesy document was provided, several questions came up regarding the survey. So, what I'd like to do is just give you a little bit of overview of the genesis of that survey, what it's intended to do, and then also speak to one of the samples that was given as a potential alternative survey. The survey really has two major components. The first component is what we call a SCOT analysis. It provides stakeholders with an opportunity to identify strengths of the school district, to look at challenges the school district may have, threats the school district may have, as well as opportunities. There are several parts of that in Part 1. The first part of it's designed to elicit stakeholder input on what they believe the quality of education is in the township schools. And then, there's several subcomponents, vision and values, and there are five questions designed as part of the process to get at vision and values. And in teaching and learning, there are six components within teaching and learning. There's a section called Community Engagement. There are three subsections. And then, Management and Operations, and there, there are five subsections. That part will give us a snapshot of what stakeholders in the community see from the survey perspective. We'll compare that to the interviews. We'll compare that to the demographics we've looked at. We'll compare it to the focus group input, and we'll compare it to the information we received in the town hall meetings. The second part of it is to elicit characteristics for the successor superintendent based on what stakeholder groups see. Those characteristics are based on a research document that was done by the ECR group in 2016. Some of the participants in that were Dr. Mike DePaolo, Dr. Strong. And I just want to mention, Mike DePaolo, 25 years ago, was the Pittman Superintendent of Schools. He happens to be at William &amp; Mary and runs their graduate programs in educational leadership. Two of the other researchers involved in that were Tim Waters and Bob Marzano. Many of you are familiar with Dr. Marzano and teaching and learning and the evaluation that's often done for teaching staff throughout the country. That work was taken and compared to the ISLIC standards. The ISLIC standards for the Interstate School Leaders Licenseur Group were terminated in 2015, and that was changed to the Professional Standards for Educational Leaders, put together by the Chief State School Officers Group. That information was used to develop those 12 points, so that stakeholders can identify the ones that they think are most important. And then, we do an analysis of that from the information that's gathered. That information will be put together in a leadership profile that we'll present to the Board of Education on November 14th. We'll present a leadership profile, which will include all of the stakeholder information, and then, we'll present a document, which will be the desired characteristics for the successor superintendent. That document will be used for formal recruiting and vetting of candidates throughout the process. I think it's important to note that no action will be taken on the identified candidates until after the new board is seated after the election. So, the next phase of that process then begins in January, beginning January 9th, and then a series of opportunities for meetings and interviews after that, with a goal to appoint by March. That's an overview of how that survey fits into the bigger picture of stakeholder input. The survey will be disaggregated to six groups. We'll identify parents or guardians of students attending the Washington Township Public Schools. We'll disaggregate by certificated staff members. We'll disaggregate by support staff members who participate in the survey. We'll disaggregate by community members and business leaders and a group of students. So, students will have an opportunity to be part of that survey. That's how the survey fits into the bigger picture. It's one piece. We did look, and I can comment on the survey that was provided as a sample, which was not a research-based survey. It came from the Martin Public Schools in Michigan. That is actually a very small school district of about 623 students. It does not demographically reflect Washington Township, about 10% minority population, 51% reduced in free lunches. So, we looked at that, and it was a survey used in a very small district, which is not similar to Washington Township. That's basically the information I had from emails that went back and forth on the survey, and I'd be happy to respond to any specific questions about that survey, or what it would take to customize a survey, which would be costly and would delay the process of starting stakeholder input.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that, Dr. Adams. I think it was really important for the board to hear and understand that the survey that you shared was just one piece of the puzzle. You know, there's a lot more to that.
I'll defer to my colleagues on the board for any additional questions, comments, thoughts.
Thanks for that overview. I appreciate the additional input. You know, I still have the concern, I mean, I appreciate all the data and stuff like that, but just from a common sense perspective, I just question, there's like one question on the characteristics of the superintendent, and I just think that that, I just don't know that that's enough in the initial survey. I know we're getting everything, and we're going to infer characteristics out of the profile of the district, but to have one question where you force people to pick four characteristics, I get it, we're going to get it from other input values, but I think we're missing an opportunity in the survey, so. That's my thoughts. Anyone else?
Yeah, I also agree with what Scott is saying. We have been telling the community that they are going to be able to do a survey that's going to help us understand what kind of superintendent they want. One of the things that came out on the Martin survey, and I think it's bigger than 600, but you might be, I was going to look it up, but I thought it was...
623.
Okay. That being said, aside from that, the kind of questions that they had in terms of what people were looking for in a superintendent was comprehensive compared to the one question that we have on our survey. Now, I know you said that we could customize our survey, it would cost an additional cost. You know, that's something I guess we could look at, if that's something that the entire board wanted to get a little bit... board wanted to get a little bit more information from our community about specifically what they're looking for in a superintendent.
One of the things that you get with a research-based survey, the Martin survey was not research-based. The science will tell you, if you're in the metrics of developing surveys, that any more than five questions, you need to do some background research and have the analytics in place. What you get with this particular survey, because it is norm-based, you get an item analysis of what every group of stakeholders said for every question asked. It gives us a lot of information that we will not get from a Survey Monkey or a homemade test or survey that's not researched. It's one piece of a puzzle that we have done in 1,500 searches across the country.
Okay, let me ask you this question, then. Is the survey just to your company? Are there other surveys that would be research-based, that would be more in line with the kind of questions that we saw on the Martin survey? Or are we confined to the survey that you use?
You can choose to use any survey you would like. We base a, when we develop a calendar and we work with a board client, that's why we have a planning meeting. And at that planning meeting, determination was made to go with the research-based survey that HYA uses. You can stop the process at this point. We can take, I asked the corporate office today how long it would take to customize a survey, and also give you national norms and local norms, because all of that has to be developed. And they said two to three weeks. And that starts at around $5,000.
I think as a board, this is a really slippery slope. I mean, we hired HYA for a reason. You know, they were the experts in this area. And I really don't think we should micromanage the process. You know, we were aware of the process early on. We agreed to hire HYA to conduct this process for us. I think it would benefit us if we allow them to do their job at this point. Now, obviously, there's going to be points where we need to insert ourselves, and you know, if there's challenges or questions about methodology or anything of that nature, you know, we'll have Bill come and address the board. But I do think, you know, I think it's very dangerous if we start to micromanage this process. We talked about transparency from the very beginning, and I think we should allow HYA to do just that. That's my two cents.
You said you used the survey in 1,500 searches?
We've done 1,500 searches. We haven't used this survey, because this survey was updated after the ISLIC standards changed, and they went to the National Board Certification process.
Could you talk a little bit to some of the success you've had with this particular survey? I think that might help to allay some fears or concerns that folks have with it.
Well, I think that probably would go, a great question. I think that would probably go to the success we've had in the longevity of the superintendents that are, I don't want to say placed, because we don't place anyone, the board selects. But we've tried to match candidates that are the right fit. There are some great leaders that can be the wrong fit for township. So the survey is one piece of a process. A process, as I said, includes interviews, including all of you. It includes interviews with your leadership team. It includes leaderships with representatives, some of your collective bargaining units. It'll include input from various focus groups. And we look at all of that information with the survey. The survey kind of gives you what might be called interrelater reliability, in that it allows you to compare all of the comments made by people to what a larger group would say in the survey. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to put the link to the survey out as soon as possible, so that each of the focus groups and people participating in interviews could promote with their constituents and stakeholders that they work with.
I appreciate your perspective, Brian. I think if we're just going to move forward with this one, it just makes it, you know, important that the additional phases, we do get that community involved, that people come to the town halls, that people participate. So, you know, it's going to be upon the residents to get involved at those points.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it starts with the launch of that survey, because it's going to encourage them to participate in these additional activities and opportunities to engage.
I imagine we'll let you know that there are two community forums set up right now, October 17th and October the 20th. October the 20th is in-person, location to be determined, and October the 17th is a virtual forum. So right there, we have, come on out to the community forums for sure, okay?
All right, thank you. Anything else from the board before we move on?
I just want to concur what Brian and Scott had just said, that when we initiated HYA, it was a multi-faceted search. So it's multiple components that we're going to use, so that when we're looking for the superintendent, we want the community involved, we want the support staff involved, and we also want the staff involved. So I just want, you know, I just want to reiterate exactly what Brian said, you know, we don't want to micromanage, but we also know that we want to be transparent moving on with the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nadia. Thank you, Dr. Adams. And community, we need you guys to come out, and we need your input. So that's going to be really important.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, that was the last presentation for this evening. So if anyone wishes to leave at this point, before we jump into the remaining business for the board, feel free to do so at this time. All right, moving on.
Brian, I just had a question. Mrs. Gerber, you had stepped out. I had a question. How many elementary students were involved in the summer program?
208.
208? And how many did we originally survey to come in?
We originally surveyed out to 306.
Okay. That's great numbers, great programs. Thank you for your work.
Brian, can I mention something as we get to correspondence?
Sure.
Because I know it says no correspondence on here.
No.
So we did have that email yesterday from, a super email from a sophomore over at the high school about the element, about the environmental club. I think it went to everybody. I know Renee, you responded, I responded.
I responded.
So did I, because I just want to be careful with quorum. But it's great, because now we have Ms. Chilla as our student representative. So I think if we could just reach out to her and kind of connect the two of them, she could report, you know, we have this great representative here, so Ms. Chilla can report back to us. And maybe in SAC, we could discuss whatever comes up from the environmental club, if they have some solutions, some potential ideas. I just thought that email was great. I like to see that we have a student reaching out who's trying to problem solve. So I just think we should try to do that. It's a great idea.
I just wanted to say I agree with you, because I spoke with the teacher back and forth, and we also agreed that, you know, that her class, the club would meet up with Angelina, you know, because they're interested in, you know, the electric school bus program.
Yes.
You know, that would be a great opportunity for them. I even told them, my thing is not working, unfortunately, for some reason, that they can come out, and maybe they can do a presentation or something.
Yeah.
That meet with Angelina about what they would like to do.
Oh, she's in the club. That's perfect.
Yeah, I'm in the club with them, and we've been communicating a bit.
That makes everything easier.
You're making this too easy for them. Don't make it that easy.
She's doing a good job already.
All right, there was no additional, there was no additional correspondence for this month. At this time, could I get a motion to approve the minutes listed, under approval of minutes? Could I get a motion to approve the minutes listed?
So moved.
Can I get a sec? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, perfect. At this time, are there, is there any old business from the board? Old business?
All right, one item on old business. So we had a person come up last meeting to ask about the bowling club, the special needs bowling club and busing. I just wanted to know if there was any resolution on that.
Yes. I connected back with Steve Gregor, who oversees the co-curricular programs at the high school. Steve Gregor, he indicated that this is around the time that that program would be up and running. He was going to connect with the teacher, who oversees and advises those students. That transportation process is once a week. Janine Wector and I have met and talked about this multiple times, in looking to secure a bus for that period that starts right around now, right at a local bowling alley in Washington Township, and runs, as far as Steve determines, somewhere around where the NJEA convention runs. So I am hopeful. And I've talked to the particular person who came up twice now on the phone to make that a reality. That would be my, that would be your superintendent's goal there, to make that happen, okay? And I feel very good about where we are, okay?
Thanks, Jack.
Any other old business from the board? I think for me, we had talked at last week's meeting about convening an ad hoc committee to, as it relates to procedures and hiring candidates here in the district. I did some digging and some research this week, and I did learn that the Equity Council, they actually started this process. In fact, they have a draft in place. So what I'd like to do is propose to the board that we convene this ad hoc committee, and they work closely with the Equity Council to really discuss and procedures as they relate to hiring candidates all across the district. I think the committee, upon its completion of the work, would, along with the Equity Council, submit a recommendation to the superintendent for the board. So I'd like to go ahead and convene that committee. I just want to kind of go on record and share that with the public in this group.
I'd like to add to, in addition to the Equity Committee, I'd like to hope that our HR department will be involved as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely. They will be. Thanks, Connie.
Could I say one more thing on old business?
Sure.
I was going to put it under new business, but I've got a couple of things going on. So one of the things that we had talked about before at our work session was, you know, voting on the Muslim Student Association. I was trying to look back at the list, because I don't, you know, I'm just kind of learning how clubs work, but I know I'd emailed Jack, and it looks as though, you know, it's approved once, but then we have the request to be operational, which yearly has to be checked and approved. I did not, there's some activities in clubs that I know about that I don't see on the list, and so I don't know whether it was, you know, they're approved, or we're just not leaving them on the list for one reason or another. I didn't, you know, I'm not going through all of them, but I know the Anti-Defamation League I didn't see on there, I didn't see the Bible Club Mock Trial, there's a couple of different ones. So I just wanted to be sure that, since we're looking at the Muslim Student Association, we're trying to look at it through a lens where we're making sure that all the clubs are, you know, we're managing it in a way that doesn't let anybody slip through the cracks, because I'm concerned about that. I love that we have clubs that offer a lot of diversity in the high school especially. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we look at this and we try to make sure that we're on track with it. And since I wasn't sure how it worked, and I was looking at it yesterday, I figured I would bring that up.
Noted.
Thank you.
Brian, do we have to approve your ad hoc committee or no?
I don't think so. We don't need to do that. All right. All right, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Could I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, for the public again, if you wish to speak, there's some yellow cards you'd need to fill out. Additionally, please limit your remarks to five minutes, and there can be no back and forth. Okay? So with that being said, I'm going to call Denise, is it N? Naffinger?
Hi.
Okay. You're up.
I'm Deanna Naffsiger. I am a driver here in Township. I'm also on the negotiating team. I think you know why we're here. We need a date. We need a date. Date set for negotiations, and we need it kept. You've can't, the board has canceled on us way too many times. This is why we're here. We need a date, and we need you to keep it. You come here every month, you make your board meetings. You need to sit down with us now and negotiate our contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Just for what it's worth, so just for what it's worth, I'm obviously new here. I was hired a month or so ago or less. So you could blame me, in part, trying to coordinate schedules with the board committee. I had various things on my schedule, obviously, before I was even retained. That is a priority from both them and me. So I anticipate, I know dates have been, I think dates have been shared, I anticipate having a date soon, and I would imagine that, you know, we will be at the table soon. But I just want to make sure you realize that's part of the issue.
You know, we appreciate that, but, you know, we knew that board seats had to be, we needed new board members. You knew the superintendent, we're going down that, you know, slope with the superintendent. Like, so this has been on the table for a while. You knew positions had to be filled. So it's just not a good enough excuse. I mean, we need these dates set.
Thank you. Thanks. Is it Madison, high school senior?
Good evening, members of the board. Sorry. My name is Madison. I am a high school senior. I have been in Washington Township since I was in Brenlock. I went to Brenlock, I went to Thomas Jefferson, Orchard Valley, and now I am finally finishing my last year in the high school. During my freshman and sophomore year, I went out of the district. I attended a school in Philadelphia for, at the time, I was very much into arts, all that, so I went to performing arts school, and I had been accepted only, I think there was 200 kids in my graduating class, if I would have stayed there, but regardless. So during my freshman year, we had the strike of COVID. And during COVID, a lot of stuff was brought up, such as the massive movement that was the BLM movement. And my school required that year, that in my sophomore year, that we take African-American history as a required course. And it was our full, we have full credit for it, and it would have counted where we would have had here as a, I'm trying to remember the name of the actual course, but it's Honors Expansion of America I. It's what we would, we have here as our equivalent. I had reached out to my counselor last year, when I came in as an entering junior, that I think that I should be going into Honors of Expansion II at that point, as in my junior year, in which they told me, well, we don't recognize African-American history as a actual course here. It's elective. And I didn't understand why they would put it as an elective rather than an actual course. If anything, I believe it should be mandatory to all schools, especially following the movement that was in 2020, and even continuing now. And I have reached out to several counselors, I've reached out to several teachers. I have contacted the school several times about it, actually, about how I believe that this should be recognized as an actual course, not even just because I don't want to take history in my senior year, because I actually genuinely love taking history. When I took African-American history, I actually completed it in '87, which is about maybe 5% to 10% more than I have in any other history class I've taken in my entire life. It was probably one of the best classes I've actually taken. I've actually learned probably more in it than I have in Honors Expansion of History I, considering my teacher actually ended up getting, I think he resigned halfway through the year, and we never had a proper curriculum the entire year. So I look back into it, and I'm like, why did I have to retake another year, considering I've already learned all this already in African-American history? It was just a repeat of the same year, the same material, and it just disappoints me a lot that the school isn't recognizing my work, as well as the fact that African-American history should be considered American history. I don't know how New Jersey recognizes this, because I know in Pennsylvania, there are different set rules and how they do their curriculum, but I do know that other schools in New Jersey, such as Cherry Hill, do recognize it as a full course, and you can take your sophomore and/or junior year. So I don't understand why Washington Township, as diverse and as big as a school we are, haven't recognized this yet as a class. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madison.
Thank you, Madison.
I don't want to, I don't know. Steve, could you just give a brief summary of the genesis of that course, when we created it, in terms of its makeup and composition?
Sure. Let me start out with, I'm a product of the Pennsylvania Public Schools, and they only require one year of US history, whereas our Department of Education requires two. So the Expansion of America is the first year, and America on the World Stage is the second year. And we can recognize your course for credits, it's just it does not satisfy a graduation requirement, according to the Department of Education. So students who take the course you're referring to, it's an additional course that they take as an elective, but it's an official course. I just want to make that distinction. It's not required, but it is an official elective that we would recognize otherwise. Does that help?
I wasn't given a choice. No, that was an assigned class. I did not get a choice for this.
Assigned, what was it, assigned class?
It was a required course over there.
Yeah.
Over here, they had told me that I had to... So students who take the course you're referring to, it's an additional course that they take as an elective, but it's an official course. I just want to make that distinction. It's not required, but it is an official elective that we would recognize otherwise. Does that help?
I wasn't given a choice. No, that was an assigned class. I did not get a choice for this.
Assigned, what was it, an assigned class?
It was a required course over there.
Yeah.
Over here, they had told me that I had to take the 13 years of history, which I don't see the point in if I've already taken that year's history. Why aren't we recognizing that as history? It was a waiting course there.
It doesn't fulfill a graduation requirement.
Why doesn't it?
Yeah. Dr. Gregor, what, my recommendation would be that we can connect back with you in a very personal, personal way, to hear you, beyond the five minutes that you have, with folks like Dr. Gregor, maybe myself, and others, in terms of your concern that could last more than just five minutes, that we could set up at your convenience ASAP.
And I, yeah, I agree, and I think the bigger question is, what would it take to kind of get that course recognized, I guess almost at the state level, as a requirement? So I think that's the question. So that's something I guess we'd have to look into.
All right. And so, you know, I have monthly contact with the Department of Education in the form of the Executive County Superintendent for Gloucester County, and I'll be seeing her this Friday, I believe, if she's in attendance, but otherwise, I see her once to twice a month, so she has a direct connection to Trenton and the Department of Education. Okay? You're welcome.
Yeah, so Madison, we'll take it offline, and then, you know, we'll kind of dig a little deeper to kind of really answer your question. Appreciate it.
At this time, Mary Ann Mueller. Could you leave your name with Doc, could you leave your name with Dr. Gregor before you leave, just? Yeah, so we have that official name, and we can make that connection. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I am Vice President and Treasurer of the Support Staff Association, which make up bus drivers and aides, paraprofessionals, food services, custodial and maintenance, IT and security. While I cannot and will not divulge any specifics about negotiations, I have a question. If everyone involved wants to settle quickly on a contract, why is it taking another, nearly another one and a half to two months to sit down with us? The association has been ready for months, waiting on the board to meet with us. Let's not forget that we were the union during the pandemic, negotiated a one-year extension to help the district, and we were the only union that did so. Every other union in the district has received a contract but the support staff. Now that it's time to sit down with us, we are continually asked for dates to meet, they have been agreed upon, and at the last minute canceled by the board for various reasons. The first cancellation was due to the death of the board's lawyer's father. While we are sympathetic, someone could have stood in his place. The next cancellation was due to vacations. We were not on vacation. The final cancellation was due to needing a new legal firm to represent the board. None of the cancellations were made by the association or the fault of the association. At this point, we feel disrespected and unappreciated for all that we do and continue to do. Our morale as staff members is low. Do not be surprised if more support staff leave for better paying jobs. As an association, we have done more than our share of trying to accommodate the board. Now it is time for you to accommodate us and get these negotiations done with a fair and equitable contract. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mary Ann. Mary, is it Bonnance?
Bonnance. My name is Mary. I'm a bus driver. I'd like to give you all a little education on what it's like to be a bus driver. First of all, we love our job. We love our kids. We're up at 5:00 AM, we're in our buses, rain, snow, cold, whatever, to pick up the children who are the, we are the first people they see, and the last people they see. We set them up for the day. We make them happy. We wipe their noses, we dry their tears. We do all that because we love our job. What we are, though, right now is we're bleeding, bus drivers, bleeding. 1.5 million bus driver shortage in the United States. 81% of every school district has a shortage. I'm from down south, I'm going to tell something to you all. You're going to lose bus drivers, you're going to lose support staff. We are not easily replaced. We are skilled. We are tested. We have to follow federal laws, not just state laws. And we're so unappreciated that you all can't sit down with us, our representatives, and have a meeting? No excuse is good enough anymore. None. Our wheels stop turning, this district, you don't have students, and you got a lot of mad parents, because they're going to have to take their kids to school. We're already running late. We don't have enough drivers. You want extra drivers for all these extra programs? Where are you going to get them? We're tired. We're doing extra runs. We can't get them all done. But we're like gum on the bottom of y'all's shoes. And shame on you. Shame on you. I'll tell you what, I've been around a long time, these gray hairs aren't new. And for y'all to kick us to the curb, when we get up every day to bring those kids to your schools, no matter what, we're there. Day we aren't there, you guys are going to have a problem. That day's coming, because we're bleeding bus drivers. There are not enough of us. You can't attract more because you refuse to negotiate. We haven't had a contract in a year and a half. We're working on an extension. We don't want that. Now, I hope that this showing here tonight, and a lot of them have left because we got to get up at 5:00 o'clock in the morning, I hope that you all will take a look at what you're doing. 84 cents of every dollar goes to this board out of the taxes. Parents are not going to tolerate this. When you got all these mad parents coming in here, you think we're bad dressed, Tim Red? Wait till they get here, because see, they're paying the bill. I pay the bill. We all pay the bill. You guys won't even sit down with us. You will not negotiate, let alone in good faith. Now stop it. All your problems aside, we got problems too. And we want you to understand that, and make us a priority. All the support staff needs to be a priority right now. They're giving bonuses. We can take our CDLs and go anywhere. We can. You can't replace us. There aren't enough of us. It's supply and demand. Now, we're going to demand that you all get it together and meet with the representatives. Give us a contract. Attract new drivers, because we're bleeding. We're not doing extra stuff. We don't have the manpower, I'm sorry. You want bowling? Hire some drivers, pay them. We can't do it. It's a numbers game. We're bleeding. Not enough. We're happy to try, but you know what? It's not going to happen. Y'all need to get it together. So get a meeting scheduled. By next week.
Thank you, Mary. We hear you loud and clear. Megan Watson?
Hey, guys, Megan Watson, Township resident mom. Two things I'm going to touch on really quickly, and then I want to touch on why I'm mainly here. First of all, I appreciate the committee that you're going to create to deal with, like, job requirements and working with the Equity Committee. I'm part of that committee, we have had this conversation. One thing I'm here to ask the board to, though, to do immediately, which you don't need a committee to do, is our, our interview process should not, and this was a consensus across the board, should not include any questions about whether you attended Township, whether you live in Township, what your connections are to Township, because asking those questions automatically creates a perception that there's a bias towards people who are in Township. And if we want to, and if we want a diverse community of people who work here, we're not going to get that if it looks, it appears like we only want Township people. So I'm asking you to immediately stop asking that question, stop including that question. That is a decision that can be made tonight. You don't need a committee to make that decision. The other thing is, I wasn't going to say anything about the support staff, but I'm going to say something about the support staff. You can't do anything in this district without support staff. And I'm not saying, I understand everybody has stuff going on, I know you guys have had a lot of turnover, there's been a lot of changes, but there is nothing that happens in our schools without the support staff. And we have seen the impact of having a reduced support staff this year. We don't have late buses. We just heard that there were over 300 kids invited to that summer program, but because of busing, we only had 27 kids. So this needs to be our priority. Make a meeting for next week. Really quickly, the other things I wanted to bring to your attention is, I would like the board to look into students getting detentions for being late to homeroom, particularly in high school. It's my understanding that that's one of the highest rates of detention, and that seems to be a really stupid reason to get detentions. It's homeroom. They're not learning anything in homeroom. It's a collect, it's just collecting students. We should not be giving students detention for being late to homeroom. As long as they're at their first period class on time, that should be fine. So please look into that and change that policy. Okay, last thing. All right, that's it, right? All right. But what I really want to talk about, the other thing I want to talk about tonight is, and I've talked about this in the past, I am, I get really frustrated when I feel like we're treating our students like they're kids. Our students at the middle school and high school level in particular are young adults. I was really upset to see the flyer that came home today about how they're treating unit lunches at the high school. I was part of those discussions for changing the schedule at the high school. The purpose of the unit lunch at the high school was so that students had the freedom to meet with teachers, to do club meetings, to meet with other students, to work on projects. Like, there was a reason that all the students were to have an hour together, and to get a flyer today that says all the students have to stay in place for an hour, and they can't go do that, was shocking. We need to be treating our high school students like the young adults that they are. I get that it's easier for teachers if they have to stay in place, but when has educating students to the best of their ability ever been about what's easy for the teachers? It is not about what's easy for the teachers, it's about what's best for the students. And so I really hope that someone will reassess and reevaluate what we are using those student, unit lunches for. It should be for students to do what they need to do, and they should have the freedom to be, to do what they need to do, and the respect to be able to make a decision what they should be able to use those lunches for. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Can we take that off the, I can only speak to the one, can we take that off of the interview, you know, that question? Because I completely agree with Megan about...
To give you a sec, I've been here 43 years, I've never asked any of those questions ever in my entire life, but I will hearken back with our folks so that we're clear on that, because that's not a process that we normally would follow relative to where, who lives where, what, and so forth. So as your superintendent, I'll be with my administrative team on Thursday, I can make sure that's clear. All right, anyone else?
I'd just like to talk about the flyer. Maybe I read it incorrectly. It did say that the students, where they are for lunch, would need to stay in place, but if you go down to the bottom, it said, if they, if they have a, I guess, I don't know how it would be, a pass, or they're going somewhere, which I would think would include extra help, clubs, whatever, that they are permitted to leave. They have to have something that shows that they are going somewhere and that the teacher is going to be receiving them. If they're not going anywhere, then they have to stay in place. I could be wrong. I don't know. Mr. McGee, do you know anything about that?
You're right. Am I right? You're right. Okay.
Brian, I don't know if we want to entertain this or not, but the back and forth.
Yeah, it shouldn't happen. All right, guys, we can't go back and forth. We hear you, and that's something we'll definitely look into. All right? Thank you.
Brian, can I say, I mean, I think, just perspective, right? The other thing we have to balance is student safety, and making sure that the kids all have a safe environment, so we want to make sure they have the opportunity to do what they need to do, but also that everybody's safe, so I think that's just something to keep in perspective.
All right, Mr. Ed Russell?
May I reintroduce myself again to you folks? I did it in the spring. My name's Ed Russell. I'm a former non-commission officer in the United States Infantry. I'm a graduate of the Wharton School, University of Pennsylvania, and I worked for IBM for 35 years doing finance and processes. And I titled this Catch 22 because it's recent news, and I think it's important that you view this in the context of a business. So the latest Rutgers Eagleton poll shows that 51% of New Jersey adults oppose having health and sexual education taught in elementary school. Okay? Now, that's one group that you interface with. Secondly, according to the New York Times poll, more than 2/3 of registered voters oppose sexual orientation and gender identity being taught in grade school. Now, these are your financiers, these are your customers, these are your employers giving you that kind of information. On the other side of the coin, a New Jersey superintendent of a school system says the following. "We would not pass the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum Monitoring. If the district fails this process, we may become ineligible for state or even federal funding." So on this side, you have your customers saying, "We don't think it's a good idea to do this in elementary school." You have the state government and the federal government saying, "If you don't do this, you are not going to get money." To me, that's a catch 22. Your customers are saying, "We want this," and the people that are overseeing you say, "You're not allowed to do it." So it's just something for, I'd like you folks to consider.
Thank you, Ed. Justin Williams?
Hey, guys, I'm going to make this short and sweet. I would love to talk about the technocracy we're moving into, or the plans the Global Economic Forum has, but nobody properly cares. But I know everybody does care about inflation, and if you can go to the grocery store, you can see all the prices are going up ridiculously. It's like insane, you're making life decisions when you're in there, like, should I get socks or mayonnaise? Drawers or pork chops? So anybody with a, with their main source of income as bus driving, or any of the staff with Washington Township, we probably just need a little bit, little bit of a hand. We don't, we don't want, we don't want too much, we just, we just want a little hand, you know? We're reaching the, reaching the place where the rubber's meeting the road, no pun intended. And as a school bus driver, I would just like to say, we're mild-mannered, but it's kind of boiling, so it's kind of, kind of get to a boiling point, you could tell with some of the drivers, but hopefully, things go well next weekend, it's not a dark winter.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it. Is it Chrissy Kozar?
Okay, so some mayonnaise, I got it.
All right, good evening, Board of Education. Chrissy Kozar, I am a longtime resident of the Township and a longtime employee of the Township. I'm school bus driver, and it's my 17th year of loyal service to this district. Along with my support staff colleagues, we ensured our students received food, thanks to our food service department. We had learning accessibilities, thanks to our IT department. Delivery of food and materials, thanks to our transportation... we ensured our students received food, thanks to our food service department. We had learning accessibilities, thanks to our IT department. Delivery of food and materials, thanks to our transportation department. Our classroom assistants dedicated themselves to hybrid learning. Our 12-month employees cleaned, repaired, updated, and ensured district environments were as safe as possible, and security departments kept our buildings secure. We worked for two and a half years through a pandemic. We're still working. We're still vigilant. We still love our jobs, and we love where we work and what we do. But many of our support staff work positions that no longer have medical benefits, due to the board reducing hours for positions. Our support staff have been attempting to settle their contract for almost a year. Late reports, board member hiccups, retirements, and legal firm changes have added to the delays. Consistently, I'm hearing of the meetings being canceled yet again. You meet every month. Funny that. Your employees are tired of broken promises. They started with the last superintendent and continue with continuous meeting frustrations. Where is the respect for my colleagues and my friends? This board needs to get its act together and needs to deal with this contract now. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chrissy. Is it Dana Zelachowski?
Hello. So if I stutter, just ignore me, I'm nervous. But, so I've been with the district for six years as a clerical assistant. We are really like the dirt underneath of the gum. There's probably about six of us in the entire district. We don't even get mentioned in really anything. This year has been the worst year. I'm miserable coming into work every day. I work for the Department of Special Ed. I absolutely love my kids. I don't even work hands-on with the kids. I'm the clerical. But my boss is so strapped for all the stuff he's taking care of, because we are so shorthanded everywhere. It's unfair to him. It's unfair to us. It's unfair to our aides that are getting manhandled. We're just handing them out left and right, because we don't have enough to shit, like, to do our jobs. They're being shared everywhere in the school district, and that's an absolute disgrace. My child is a fourth grader. He is not a special ed student. But even my son is being, like, shortened of everything he could be getting handed to him. But he's not, because we don't have enough staff to do anything. We want to do bowling trips. Absolutely. I love the bowling trips. We don't do it because we don't have bus drivers. Really can't do it because we don't have the aides to take care of the kids, to go on the trips. I don't understand why this has taken so long. I've never been so annoyed with this district. I also have a 20-year-old who graduated the year 2020. She got nothing. That's fine, whatever. That's fine. My 20-year-old's still more successful than I am in life, and I'm so happy for her, but she works at a hoagie shop when she comes home during breaks for school. She makes more than I do working at a hoagie shop. My son goes for a haircut. That's a whole day's pay for me, for my son to get a haircut. Like, does that, does that make sense? For the three and a half hours that I'm only allowed to work, I still work probably about five, because I go home and I'm still working because of my love for the kids. You can ask any of the girls in here that know me, I love these kids. I stay here because I love the kids. I don't stay here for the pay, because there's no way I would ever stay in here, honestly, for the pay. It is, it's embarrassing. When I have to tell someone, like, yeah, pretty much my whole day pay is a haircut. So sad when you have staff who are getting raises every year, or the staff that, oh, I need a pretty new desk. For six years, I had two tables that didn't match, and I did my job every day successfully still. I've never had any problems in the school. I've never had any issues with my boss. I've never been written up. I had two tables, did the job. My chair, I used to have to electrical tape it, because it would pull my skin. That's fine, because I don't know where our money's going anymore, because I'm also a parent in here. I pay taxes like everybody else. Where is our money going that we don't have the money to do this stuff anymore? It's not fair to our kids. I don't even want my son to come to this school anymore. It's embarrassing to say that. Every day, I say to my husband, I don't know if my son will be able to go to this high school, because it's, we're so short everywhere. Like, it's, it's very upsetting. Yeah, I would love to see the kids have freedom and do whatever they want in the school. We don't have the staff to monitor them anywhere, though. We don't have the staff, because the pay is awful. Sorry.
Thank you, Dana. Mary Williams?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments and, and the hard work that you do. I think, I just want to say, I appreciate the hard work you do and your comments that you made. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to change a little bit about what I was going to speak tonight, too. And I do also want to acknowledge the support staff. I have a son with special, in the special education department, and without his teacher's assistance, he would never be where he's at today. And he's had many years where he started without a teacher's assistant, because they've had a hard time hiring people, and especially hiring people for part-time positions with low pay and no benefits is very difficult. And I know that's a common problem everywhere, but it is, it is something that can be changed. A couple other just small little things I wanted to bring up. IEP meetings. Every year, I get a meeting for my son's IEP meeting. Every year, I have to request a reschedule, because it always happens to be when I'm working, or, and I understand that those are hard to, you know, plan with the parent ahead of time, and I appreciate the ability to reschedule. It was also sent to me for October Day Virtual again, which I don't understand. I simply requested a in-person meeting, because we're back to in-person everything. So I would like to meet with everybody in person for my son's IEP planning. So if any parents are listening and have children with IEPs, just know you can request an in-person meeting, and they will change it for you. Something else, computer insurance. I'm not sure why we have to pay $50 a computer for insurance that is provided by the school, and I knew the school was giving lots of grant money to give everybody computers. I understand things happen outside of school. I personally have three children in the school, and I don't have an extra $150 to pay for insurance. So what is, what are other options that you can do? I mean, if it was $20 a computer, that would be a little bit more feasible. I don't understand why we have to pay $50 a computer every single year when it's not provided, you know, when it's provided by the school. And I know there's grant money sitting around that can fix computers, you know, that can pay for computers to be fixed without taking money out of our pockets. A friend of mine at football hadn't paid for her insurance yet, and her son just crashed his computer screen. It fell on the floor, because it was on the edge of a table in the classroom, and she's being told, because she didn't pay for the insurance yet, she has to pay $260 to get the screen fixed, which is absolutely terrible. So, I mean, what's going to happen if something happens to my son's computer and I don't pay for it? Are they just not going to have a computer? Because I just don't think $50 a computer for insurance a year is, is feasible. And then something else I just wanted to bring up. I know it's a current concern for a lot of parents. And I did go to the health curriculum meeting for the elementary students, which was incredibly informative and super helpful, and it seems like everything that the state is requiring is being implemented in a very modified version for the elementary students. There are opt-out forms. Totally appreciate all of those options. I'm going to go to the meeting for the middle and high school level on Thursday. I, and I truly don't have any issues with anybody, no matter what they relate as, what their gender is. I'm just wondering why teachers are giving out forms, asking students what pronouns they want to be referred to as. I don't know why it has to be pushed on our children. I just think it causes more confusion. They've been through so much over these past couple of years with COVID. They have been through so much mentally that has not even been dealt with. And then to be given a form and asked whether they want to be referred to as a girl or a boy, and just cause more confusion, I just don't quite understand that. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Did anyone want to address the computer insurance issue with Ms. Williams, or do we take it offline?
You know, I would suggest offline. I'll have, I have access to my cabinet on a regular basis, so being folks like my IT director, our BA, our purchasing manager, myself as well, would, you know, wrestle with that. I know it was a time when it cost more than that, I want to say 65, several years ago. So that would be best served for a person like me to put that in a meeting to evaluate, okay? Is that?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll address the pronoun issue, and I do not claim to know what goes on in every classroom, but I will say, as an educator, it's easy for students to feel embarrassed who do use different pronouns, sometimes having a form or something on the anonymous side, where a student can say it without having to come out and say it, is important and valuable for students that feel like they would be uncomfortable in a situation where they'd have to announce it in front of the class.
Thanks, Kath.
Brian? I'd like to comment on that as well. I happened to be at the, at the presentation for the elementary students for the health program, and a parent actually brought out, I thought, a pretty good, a pretty good comment, that when, when the teachers, he brought up the issue about the pronoun, that actually, our sixth graders haven't been taught anything about that. So they're getting the form, but we haven't really addressed that, which we're going to be addressing it in the future, because it's been, being implemented this year. So I could see, I could see, you know, both sides of it. You know, for a student on a form, it's easier to write, and then for the student that really doesn't know what it, what it's all about. So I just wanted to make that comment. I thought that parent's comment at the meeting was a pretty good one.
Thank you. Last name, Botczynski?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott.
Jack, is that up to the teacher's discretion, or do we have a policy on that as to...
We have a policy.
We do have a policy on that?
Yeah, I can get, I can send it along to you. Yeah, we do.
Last name, Botczynski?
Hi, Yasef Botczynski. I'm a resident of this township for over 12 years. And again, I will, I have some remarks I wanted to say, but I will, I witnessed such interesting discussion. I will, I'll just comment on what was said. So we have a support staff that complains, is frustrated. They are not paid. They are not appreciated. And you can also hear it with the teachers and the councilors. If you talk to them, some of them are burnt out. Some, there was discussion the other time about, they're being asked to do above and beyond what they are paid for. And people in this district are frustrated. And it's a lot of, a lot of this is about money. And this is a big district with a big budget. So the lady asked here, where did the money go? Where did the money go? That is a very important question. How do we spend money? And, and Mr. La Liberty, thank you for participating in those discussions and watching every dollar that is being spent, and other members as well. But we have to look probably at the bigger picture. The gentleman here talked about inflation. You know, where do those problems come from? Our community, and our family, and our country are working very similar. If you spend on the wants, you don't have on the needs. And as a country, we spent a lot of money in the last few years, and now there is inflation. That's a tax imposed on us without asking us about taxation. In our families, you know, it's going to be recession. The recession is coming. We have to think, are we going to cut vacation? Are we going to cut spending on clothes or food or anything else? So there's always consequences. And this, in this district, there are also consequences. We have to focus on what we absolut, on what we absolutely need for the students to succeed. In the education, in their college readiness, maybe vocational training, and all the support issues that are necessary. But let's have a bold conversation about what is not absolutely necessary for this district to function and for the students to succeed in life. That's my comment. About, Mr. Dr. Ellis talking about Equity Council working as hiring council, I'm not sure if I understood it.
I'll get it.
Because if, if that means that, for some reason, Equity Council will heavily kind of work as hiring council, I have concern with this, because I'm not sure if Equity Council is representative of the community to the degree that we would like hiring council should be representative of the community. There is probably different group of people interested in equity, and somewhat different, maybe broader group of people interested in, in hiring the, the new leadership on the, of the township district. From what I wanted to say, I think it's a great community. We met great teachers here, great councilors, councilors, professional people, coaches, people who volunteer for, for their time for the community. This is a great community with a great potential. And, and there we s, we have some problems, and we have to work on those problems to, to truly create opportunities for our kids. Briefly, about superintendent search and principal search, there are obvious qualities we expect, like executive functioning, et cetera, and enthusiasm in communication, being inspiration for others. But also, I think what's important is someone who is able to obviously keep the politics out of the job, but someone who can think outside of the box and cut the red tape and go against the structure, rigid structure of the hierarchy. Because our kids lost a lot of learning. They were damaged psychologically. And we need to put things first and the procedures second. We need to empower people on the, lower on the top end pole to make the decisions, because those decisions, they know the kids better. They, they can make the better decisions and foster them, and faster than going up and down the hierarchy structure. I don't know if we're thinking about internal or external candidate, but advantage of internal candidate would be someone who is better known by the community, respected and valued. And polling parents about the qualities of the candidate is one thing, and maybe polling parents about actual people they want to be in the leadership position is another suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Botczynski.
I think to address your question regarding the, the ad hoc committee that I referred to earlier, just keep in mind, I'm talking at a very macro level, all right? So we will not be part of any selection or hiring process, or recruitment process for that matter. What we want to do is really establish best practices to make sure we have a diverse pool of candidates for the administrators to select from. And I think by putting together that ad hoc committee, we can help the district do that. So be very clear, we're not selecting any candidates. These guys are the experts. This is what they do. All right? We just want to make sure we establish best practices with the district. So that addresses the one point. Anybody else want to add anything else?
Yeah, Brian, want to, want to kind of expand on what you mean by diversity?
Well, what I did learn was, you know, the state of New Jersey requires a diversity plan for all districts. So we've actually been working on that with the Equity Coalition. It's in draft form now, Dr. Alexander, if I recall. So basically, I think for us, that's a nice starting point, just to make sure, because a lot of these practices that we're talking about may already be embedded in what they've been working on. So I think this is an opportunity for us to, you know, hear, understand, and supplement what's been worked on already, before we can make a recommendation for the superintendent and the cabinet.
Yeah, Brian, as, actually, I was going to report out under new business, because we had our Equity Council meeting last week. It was a small group of us, some of whom are here tonight. And we have been working on that strategic plan. It was something that, it was worked on with a number of people, teachers, administrators, community members over the summer, in a day-long event. And then it was, you know, it's organized by priorities, where group members are kind of looking at different priorities and trying to break them down into things that might be needed. And it's, it's a lengthy process, because it involves so many different stakeholders, but it's something that we're going to be refining at this next month, so that it can then go to Mr. McGee and then to the board. So it is incoming. We're working really hard on it. And it does involve, there is a section that involves things like hiring practices.
Of course.
That's so important.
All right.
Brian, just, sorry.
Scott.
Yeah, there was questions on, like, where is the money spent and stuff like that? I think people have access to the, to the budget, right? Like, they can, you can see what we see as well, what's spent every month. Granted, not the easiest thing in the world to understand, right? Even, even for myself going through it, but it is there. It can be gone through.
Sure.
I think you make a good point about, you know, you have to make hard decisions here in the future coming up, just because times are going to start getting tough. And budgets are usually set like a year in advance, right? So are we coming into budget season pretty soon?
We're just, we're just about to start. So the process actually starts on, in the district with the budget managers in October and runs all the way through March, when it starts to be presented to the public. So we will be starting that process, and you'll hear about it at public meetings.
And we do have a public, yeah, the public meeting where the budget is actually presented to the public, which is broken down pretty easily, except, you know, accessible for everyone to understand. I don't think we had a person here last year. Not one person came. So if you're interested in the budget and what's going on, come, and then you can learn on where the money is spent, how it all works.
We can't, yeah, we can't go back and forth. So we cannot go back and forth. You can fill out a card, and you can come to the podium if you like. All right?
If, just questions about the budget, there is a public presentation of the budget, which breaks it down.
Perfect. All right.
I'd like to say something, too. Involved in the budget, too, as we get into it this year, I think based on what the gentleman was talking about, where do you spend the money? You know, obviously, part of that is to take a look at all... You know, obviously, part of that is to take a look at all our programs and evaluate our programs and what has to be tweaked or what has to be, you know, looked at in terms of where we're spending the money. Because we have a lot of challenges. And as somebody pointed out, a big part of the budget goes to salaries.
Carol Chilla?
Just a few comments. So first is the clubs that are not manned. I'll just point out the ADL club. That's been since last year. I believe the former principal was kind of the interim club advisor. And I can say that those students spent an enormous amount of time training for that club. And currently, right now, they have no update. They're just kind of walking around like, is it a club? Am I part of the club? I'm not sure what's happening. So I just want to know, who's updating those students for these clubs that were and now they're not? Because I think they deserve an answer. And if we can get someone, I know I've come up here and talked a lot about, we have interims for everything, let's get an interim for the ADL club, right? The kids have worked really hard, so that shouldn't be hard. I don't think you need a meeting for it. It could probably be decided tonight. But we need an interim for that club and other clubs that are unmanned. It's unfair to the children. In regards to superintendent search, as I was jumping out of my chair with Megan, so I have a few questions, and it was unfortunate that a lot of the public couldn't ask the questions when they were here. I would like to know, HYA, if someone can follow up. HYA, what is their response rate for research-based surveys? I know the number was discussed that they've done over 1,500 searches, and they mentioned that this survey was new. What has their response rate been? Because research-based surveys are not the easiest to maneuver as someone taking them the end user. So I'm just curious what that response rate is. So we shouldn't have to pay an extra $5,000 to just put together a basic survey. It's not complicated, just basic survey. My second comment is interviewing both boards with regards to the next characteristics for the superintendent that we all want. It should be the current board and then also the future board. You should interview both. I believe he may have just stated the current board, but it should be both. What is the student involvement in the survey? I know there was some mention of focus groups, and I'm going to be honest, I think, I feel like oftentimes we talk about the children as like a check the box, we involve the students. But there's no real like robust, meaningful conversations with them. So if there's a way that we can get them involved in a meaningful way with the superintendent search, I think that would be amazing. So, all right, my last, just, well, my last comment for this subject that I'm talking about. I'm sitting back and I'm scratching my head. We're talking about equity in terms of hiring staff, which is just a very basic function of human resources. I feel like we're making it really complicated in my world. This is, it's human resources. This is not even a question mark. And I think a district this size, hats off to Sharon in the room, kind of mans it on her own, she's like a one-man show. A district this size should have a human resources department. So I feel like it shouldn't be that complicated. I'm glad that Dr. Alexander's working on it with the Equity Committee, but like, we just, a basic algorithm of how we hire, right? The candidate hires and talks to this person, then they go to this person, right? And it should be documented interview guides. These are all things that should be really basic function. So I just want to like, as a common sense person in human resources, just, it's, it shouldn't be this hard, it's just human resources. So I think if we begin to get some help on that end, this should be a fairly quick thing to do. Student safety at lunch. So, I mean, I got to be honest, for a student to manage multiple passes if they want to see a teacher, it just sounds really complicated to me. This was not the spirit of what it was supposed to be. And I think that locking a student down at lunch, because we don't have the staff in place to make sure that it's a safe environment, that's really the issue. The issue is not, and I know, Scott, you've been speaking to a lot, student safety. We need the staff in order for that to be able to flow the way it was supposed to. And I know that's kind of a recurrent theme that everyone's coming up. We don't have the staff to ensure that the students are safe. Therefore, the easiest thing for them to do is just for us to lock them in a room and say, you can't go anywhere unless you have three different passes on your phone. And just show this email. It's just a lot, I mean, I think it kind of takes away also a little bit of the spontaneity of a child to be able to go to a teacher because maybe they learned something last period, and they said, hey, you know what? I just want to go grab the teacher real quick because I didn't understand it. But if they don't have a formal pass, it just, it's very complicated to me. I'm just going to finish up. One last comment, I can't help but say this, and I had no intention of talking about the support staff, but I feel like I have to. The support staff rate has not changed much, much since 2016. It's $13.43 an hour, and it was like that in 2016, so.
Thank you, Carol. Jack?
Cal, when I walked in here July 5th, that unit lunch and the particulars associated with that were very, 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 very high priority. And I've worked closely with that administrative team, this board, our leaders around the district, our supervisors and so forth, who care very deeply about that process and so forth. We created a memorandum of agreement to be able to fortify the number of folks that we have at those areas. I'm not currently aware that it's unsafe, having harkened back with some teachers recently that I spoke to in the summer and determined where things were then and where they are now, hearing improvement. I know Roe Faro has a daily commitment to make this year much better. I took, talked to a few assistant principals yesterday when I visited the school about that environment, hearing significantly improved. So our board created that, it proved tonight, you'll see it, to be able to add those folks to that environment to make for a much better 22, 23 school year. And I know our, our principal, who and I have spoken about as well, I think is off to a start in terms of her solid commitment and that administrative team and our staff. And I would give our WTEA leadership as well credit in coming together to address that. Okay. You're welcome.
Yeah, regard, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think we'll bring up the unit lunch and the E-Pass during IA. I mean, my son's a freshman, he didn't go to the bathroom for days. And he, I'm not saying he's a rocket scientist, but he's certainly capable of asking to go to the bathroom. And I'm finding myself texting my son, did you pee at lunch? I'm like, seriously? So, I mean, I think there's an issue when you have a freshman that's afraid to ask to go to the bathroom. And he would kill me if he knew I said that, so let's keep this between us. What happened in the boardroom, stay in the boardroom? So I think we'll have to talk about that. And there's also inconsistencies. Some teacher tells him he can't use his phone, others are telling him he can use his phone. He's a rule follower, so like, I can't use my phone, I only go to the bathroom when I have, at the locker room. And if he has, so it's just a mess. So I think we'll bring that up during IA, because I'm sure he's not the only one. I mean, maybe he is, but I'm hoping he's not. Okay?
Yeah, and I think to address the response rate question, it's pretty simple. I can reach out to Dr. Adams and get that information over to you, Carol. If you can shoot me an email or leave your email with me, I'll make sure you get that. I think it'd be relevant for the board as well. I think that's really helpful information.
Also, I wanted to respond to, Carol, you had mentioned, HYA, when we initiated the search with them, we had at that time talked about having the candidates for the school board on one of the focus groups so that it would be current board and possibly anticipated board members. So we did talk about that. I don't know where that is as far as the focus, focus group, if they can attend, you know, be a part of the parent focus group.
Yeah, I think that, that's part of the plan. I think it's going to be a non-disclosure agreement with those members. So that, that is part of the plan, if I recall. Dina, resort?
One more question, I might need an answer. Who's going to be updating the students on these open unmanned clubs? What? What?
Oh, the unmanned clubs.
So, Cal, if I understand, they're saying there's some clubs that aren't functioning because we don't currently have an advisor.
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'll harken back with, you know, our administrative team there and our student leaders on that.
Someone will communicate to the...
Yeah, that'll be me.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you.
That'll be me. I'll make sure that, that's done, okay?
Dina? Perfect.
Good evening. I think you can see the theme today is about support staff. And I didn't get up here to originally talk about them. But it's, it's critical to understand that nothing happens without them. But what is happening in this district is because we don't have enough employees, we are looking for substitute teachers and aides rather than hiring full-time. And guess when this board and this district decided to do it? I guess diversity only goes so far because Jews need not apply. This fair is being held on Yom Kippur, the holiest day in the Jewish calendar. My understanding is administration knew it and allowed it to be scheduled anyway. So talking about diversity is wonderful, and I'm on the diversity committee. However, where do we draw the line? Is it only certain diversity we want? But Jews need not apply, right? Because that's the day that they're having their meeting. What message are you sending to the members of this community? What message are you sending to the Jewish students who say, why is this happening on our holiest day? Why do we have school on that day? Do you know in the history of this board, there's only been two times when school was not held on either Rosh Hashanah or Yom Kippur? It was when we had a Jewish board member or when Meghan Watson was on it, who has a Jewish godson. Other than that, Jews just don't seem to make the cut for anything. So maybe if we had, the support staff had a contract, we wouldn't need to be doing this, and I wouldn't need to get up here to talk about how disrespectful this board and this administration are to the Jewish members of the community. Now, I also want to talk about special education. I have specific questions. I'd like to know why the 18 to 21-year-old program did not start on the first day of school with all of the other students. I'd like to know why in years past, that program did not always attend school. If there was a delayed opening, an early dismissal, or other programs, those students were told, they need not show up. There wasn't going to be busing. Gee, again, busing, right? Bus drivers, support staff. So I'd like to know what the plan is for this year to ensure that those students, the 18 to 21-year-old population, who are our most needy in special education students, are getting the education that they deserve. Next question, CPAG. I have been coming up here on and off since 2016, where I have specifically requested that this board update the district and the community on why we do not have a CPAG. For those that don't know, there's a statute in New Jersey that requires, quote, "Each district board of education shall ensure that a special education parent advisory group is in place in the school district to provide input to the school district on issues concerning students with disabilities." This district doesn't have one. In years past, they've tried to do something where they've had meetings that were very educational, they had speakers come in and talk about resources that were available to the special education community. But that's not what CPAG is. The purpose of CPAG is to provide opportunities for the parents and the community members to offer input to you, the board, the district, the administration on critical issues relating to students with disabilities. We don't have it. It's legally required. We haven't had one in at least five or six or seven years maybe. I know there was a study that was put out, or a survey that was put out by special education. Special education department decided that they were going to be the ones to decide who would be on that small subcommittee to then have meetings. That's not what a CPAG is. CPAG is open to all members of the community to provide input to this board of education. So that's a question. When is it starting and why do the special education students and community not have the support of this board in ensuring that they have access? Next question, Dr. Ellis. You indicated last week that there's a Plan B as of December 2nd if there is no principal that has been hired. We talked a little bit, and I don't think a clear answer was given, on why there was a three-week delay in putting in the advertisement for the principal's position. That three-week delay has now caused an issue where there may not be a principal at that building, at the high school, on December 2nd. Who's stepping in? What is Plan B? When my junior says to me, who is my principal on December 2nd? I have no answer. I have Plan B, but that wasn't explained what Plan B was supposed to be. With respect to unit lunch, this was put in place so that students could be part of a community. They could go to clubs, they can interact, they could be social, they can meet with their teachers, where they don't need to go to a, get a pass. They could show up and say, you taught me something first period, I'm really struggling, can you help? It helps them develop a relationship with their peers and with the teachers. That's been taken away. So now we have students that are locked in, right? Because again, no staff. What are we doing to put unit lunch back to what it was anticipated to be? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll go, go, go.
On the job fair, you put that entirely on me. I will take the full responsibility for it, no one else, me. It's a outside organization that provides our substitute service. We have been, the shortage, you know, of, of teachers in New Jersey filling classes to do that, so they asked to use that process, that came to me today, so that's under review relative to their ability to do it on another day. So that's on my desk, and I intend to do the right thing there, but I don't want you to blame anyone else, blame me. Okay? And it had to do with their request to have it. I mean, no disrespect, but I don't, I don't want anyone else, anyone to take that hit, just me. Okay?
CPAG, anyone?
I can speak for being the board representative for CPAG. Another parent, Heather Cuevas, who couldn't be here tonight. We have been kind of having some starts and false starts and, and, you know, having trouble getting it off the ground. Right now, we're, you know, waiting for an email for her specifically so that we can kind of open a dialogue with the parents. We have Debbie Esposito, who's a representative to kind of, from, for like a parent organization that helps with different CPAGs in different, in different school districts. And she has been instrumental. It would really be wonderful just to have that for our special ed students, our parents, because I know the 504 process, the IEP process, and all of the different issues that go along with special ed, it's such a multifaceted thing, from a teacher and a, and a parent of two kids with 504s. So, you know, on both aspects, as a board member, as a parent, I'm very much interested in this getting off the ground so that parents can talk about a lot of the issues and systemic issues that kind of work all together when it comes to special education in our district.
And I think it provides...
When it comes to special education in our district.
And I think it provides a good community for the special ed parents, for all of our parents who want to be involved to support our kids, I need the most, you know, the most support. For example, like you were able to say about having the IEP meetings in person. People may not know that that's a perfect example of what could be discussed in a meeting such as that. And I do apologize, I'll say for myself, for everything you just said, for me personally.
I, I can comment on that too. I do want to mention that it does say on the IEP invite letter, that parents have a choice of whether they want it virtually or in person. You didn't have to discover that, it's right in the invite letter. We've been working all through the pandemic, the two years of the pandemic, having monthly meetings with Debbie Esposito, who is the project director for SPAN, Training Parents on How to Be the Core Group for CPAG. That was at her suggestion because we need to train the parents so that they're able to run the group on their own. We typically don't have the same parents always coming out every month, that's a problem. But we did spend endless time over the pandemic writing our mission, our vision, our goals, going through activities. All of that is up on the CPAG website, which we've been expanding. We had meetings last year, and yet a lot of the parents, again, it's very hard to get them to come out. But we are having a meeting in October for parents.
For all parents? Just clarification?
We can't go back and forth, Dina.
Point of clarification, all parents or some parents?
We're starting with the core group.
Okay.
And the core group will be the group that will decide how we, the core parent group, will be deciding how we move forward in the future. And I know that they want to take leadership of the group and open it up to more parents. And in regard to the 18 to 21, it seems like you already know that this year, they did not start on the first day of school. That was because we had many new job coaches that were starting that day, and we needed to train them. But they will not have another day off like they have in past years. They will, they, the kids are coming in even, because in the past, if we had a half-day, they would be canceled. And so they're coming in every student day. And we already have it budgeted for next year to bring in the job coaches in the summer so that they will be here every student day all of next year as well.
And finally, for me, I guess to reference the Plan B that was mentioned last week by myself.
myself, um, I don't want us as a district to be, I mean, we have a looming deadline based on the interim principal currently at the high school. We can't be forced to make a bad hire because of this looming deadline. So, when I say Plan B, I was referencing maybe another interim status if need be. Now, again, I don't know if we'll get to that point, but I know one thing is that we can't force or rush this hire because it's that important. So, I'll leave it at that. Uh, Mr. Ron Lucchini?
Yeah, just, just as one other follow-up. I will call you tomorrow.
Okay.
All right? And that was something that happened moving quickly, possibly too fast, my apologies. It came to my attention today, and I'm already working on it. So, I'll call you tomorrow. Okay? Thank you.
Brian, just one more thing, Scott. I think it was a good point about us having this meeting on a holiday, on a religious holiday, and as, we should make an effort next year to make sure that we avoid those at all costs.
Yeah, it's, it's actually not a meeting, it's a job fair, so, um, that's something I spent my afternoon working on today.
But even tonight, even, even tonight's holiday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got it, got it, got it.
Point noted, yes, Scott.
Oh, I understand, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right, I'm gonna start.
Mr. Lucchini?
Put my five minutes on there. In answer to the people who are asking where the money's going, well, $35,000 of it is going towards an investigation into, uh, some of your board members there who accepted money from an attorney who ultimately got a contract with the Board of Education for their campaigns, and, uh, some of the shenanigans that went on there, they had higher than $35,000 to spend for that, uh, to find out whether it was wrong or not. I, I think we can pretty much assume that regardless of whether it's legal or not lit, it was wrong. All right. We also spend 1.5 million, based on my monthly calculations, if you multiply it by 12, on a organization that comes in, they have people that stand in the classrooms for certain special classrooms, I guess they're unruly or whatever, and these guys, they don't have a special, um, they don't have a college degree, they have a special certification that says they went through some training, but they never explained to me how long the training was, what it entailed, or anything else. They get paid like $35, $40 an hour from De Novi and Associates, I think it is. All right? And I think it wouldn't be too difficult to train some of the people who are aides. I, I kept asking, what's the difference between what these people are doing? They don't have to have a college degree, although some of them do, and what's, what an aide would do in my class when I was teaching? And I still haven't gotten an answer. All right, well, anyway, I didn't come to really talk about that, but I, since everyone to know where the money was going, I, there's 1.5 million plus $35,000. Seven years ago, I told this story before, but for those of you who are new to the, uh, meetings, seven years ago or so, when Mr. Bolandorf took over the position of superintendent, I inquired about the, uh, failure to redistrict in this school system for, I don't know, 20, 25 years, that led to a discriminatory, uh, situation where a one middle school and one elementary school, I believe, were impacted with a disproportionate number of, uh, low-income or whatever, yeah, student lunch, you know, uh, free student lunch and reduced student lunch students. And finally, when Mr. Bolandorf, I, I had a, might say, I threatened him because he was doing the job, but I had heard so many ridiculous arguments for it over the years, and really, it was just gutless on the part of the superintendents before him. And I told him, I said, "I, I already went to a lawyer, and, uh, he's familiar with civil rights lawsuits, and, uh, we might have to take action." And Joe said, you know, "Give me to the end of the year." And he did redistrict. So, he stepped, he kept to his promise there. However, during that same conversation, we, he taught, he was picking my brain, so to speak, as to why I'm so upset, and why I got so upset with the school system as a teacher. And I said, you know, because I, I, we're in the business of education, and yet, it seems like the answers that we get to things for, are irrational, okay? And last meeting, seven years later, I said, you know, and I could go on with numerous examples, but I'd have to have a podcast, so I'm not going to. But, last meeting was the classic. It ended with, uh, Mr. Boldezaro asking, you know, "I never got an answer to my question about whether the board members knew about the president of the, uh, board, past president of the Board of Education, uh, you know, trying to rig the superintendent's position and put her friend in there." And it was, obviously, this happened during an email she had sent, or whatever. And Elaine Clancy, who just happens to be absent today, because I think she knew I was coming, made a comment, and she said, "We told her to slow down." And to me, that was, had some, you know, I drew some serious inferences from that. "We told her to slow down." We didn't tell her to stop or not to do it, which indicated that she knew that this stuff was going on, and between you and me, I, you know, Elaine Clancy is not a member, a made member of their family, the, the children's first family, okay? She's an outsider who wants to be part of that mob, I guess. And anyway, for her to say "we," that meant she knew about it, that meant the other people on the board who were close knew about it. All right? And, uh, I guess I'll get into more in terms of how that intellectually is insulting, that she's made those comments, because my time's up, but I'll, I'll continue on that.
Yeah, and just in Elaine's defense, she's not here, she's recognizing Rosh Hashanah today, so that's why she's not here today. Julie Kinzepel.
I'm the one he's talking about, if anybody doesn't know. The reason why I put a card in is I agree with Carol that we have to listen to students. I'm really glad Angelina's on the board, because if you listen to students, and we had another student, I think her name was Madison, who came up to talk about the African-American Studies class, if you listen to students, a lot of, and, and having two high school students, myself in my home, and a, and a middle school student, they, they look at these meetings and they laugh. I mean, I don't know, you know, "Okay, boomer," that's what they're saying when they're looking at some of the stuff that people come up to the microphone and say. The anti-LGBTQ, the anti-Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter, the, all of this, like, non-acceptance, non-belonging type of talk. Spend a day in a high school, please, please, I urge you. In fact, when I was board president, I would go to the schools. You can ask people who had issues with different things. I, I walked in Whitman Square when they said they wanted a bus. I, we went to the high school to look at the bathrooms. We spent time in the school. So, it's really important, I think, to talk to the kids, because a lot of these people here are right. The first people they see is the bus driver, the last person they see is the bus driver. My daughter, last year, had a horrible school year. She hated school, she hated the mask, she hated everything, and her touchstone was Schatz, the football coach, by the way, who I know is not support staff, and the bathroom attendants. Those were the people that she would come home and talk about as people who touched her. Now, her, her, her teachers were amazing, but these sort of people that children interact with during the day that are non-teaching staff are very important to their day. So, I just wanted to say that. Also, you know, when we negotiated contracts the last couple of years, they were settled, I think, before they were even over, and this, I do want to acknowledge that the support staff did extend for a year when other unions didn't. I tend to agree with Mr. Lucchini on the fact that a lot of this nonsense that's going on, and I know from talking to board members, too, it feels like all of the important stuff is being sucked out of the room, and you can't focus on what, the reasons why you all, or half of you were elected and half of you wanted to be appointed, because it's non-stop investigations and people getting up to the microphone, like him and other people, talking about, you know, lawyers and attorneys. I don't, I'm gonna put on the record, I don't care who the attorney is. You've been doing a great job, in my opinion, calling people on stuff, to be honest with you, and having sat in Brian's seat, you need an attorney that's gonna do that. So, I could care less, putting it on record, who the attorney is, I don't care who the engineer is, I don't care who any of the professionals are, and nobody up here does. If somebody wanted to donate to a campaign and a check came in and it was deposited, you're allowed to accept that. So, I resent him and Boldezaro getting up here and continuously calling me, a single parent, mother of three, a taxpayer in this district, and a volunteer for seven years on this board, illegal and unethical. Stop doing that. You are liable for doing that, because I've done nothing illegal, I've done nothing unethical, neither has anybody up on this board. Just because you want to say, "There's an investigation on you, you're being investigated, you're unethical," that's BS. You have a board member right here who, who I, by the way, I thought you were meeting with the support staff, because Mr. La Liberty was on Facebook promising them raises and retro pay. So, I assumed that you met with the, with them. So, it's a shock to me to come here today and find out that you haven't even met with these people. Why are you promising raises and retro pay on, on social media? And yet, I'm being, I'm being villainized for things that I didn't even do that have been dismissed? Stop with this nonsense, listen to students, okay? And I'm talking to everybody here, and please, stop micromanaging the superintendent search. As board president, you and everybody up here are well within your right to recruit people from outside this district to interview for that job and to go for that job. It doesn't mean that anybody in here who wants to interview for it isn't going to get it. It means you are the board, you decide, you are elected, and what, part of the problem here is that four of you were not elected and have an awful lot to say about what's gonna happen with that position. Last I checked, 10 to 12,000 people elected you, 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 and you. Yet, this entire process is being outsourced to a firm where you don't even like the survey, now you want to change the survey. I mean, this, this is nonsense. You elect a board, they pick the superintendent, put a high school principal in, and move on with it, okay? You're never going to recruit a good high school principal, to Brian's point, when you don't have a superintendent, because nobody's gonna interview for that job, knowing that you don't have a superintendent. No one's gonna want to be at your flagship school, knowing the new superintendent could come in and fire them immediately and put somebody else in. So, let's just stop with all this nonsense. It's taking too long. You are wasting a ton of money on bullshit, uh, no, ethics violations that have since been dismissed. So, stop.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, I, I don't know how I'm gonna top that. I agree with everything that Julie said. Um, I'm a former member, union, I actually am a union member myself. How many people up here have kids? Just curious. Now, how, how many of y'all want to wake up at 6:00 in the morning and take your kids to school, because these people ain't gonna do their job? Why is it taking so long to negotiate this stuff? I just want to know. Because these women and men get up every day, they're doing a hell of a job, taking care of your kids, you're putting the safety of your kids in their hands, and without a contract, they're still doing it. They are busting their ass for you, and you have the audacity to deal with an extension and then say, "Oh, you know what? Eh, they had an extension already, eh, let's see how long we can drag it out for." That's, that's the way I'm feeling about it. If I'm, if my negotiations didn't go through, I wouldn't be doing what they're doing. I'd be doing exactly what they're doing. They're up here fighting to get a contract, to continue doing what they love. I hear the passion in these people's voices. They actually love their job. They love these kids, your kids, and you sit up here and you go, "Hmm, well, we do have to worry about these other issues. Let's not worry about the contract for the drivers and the aides and all that." These kids interact with them on a daily basis. They can probably talk to them, I'm sure that they've talked about issues with them. They've probably cried on the buses, they've laughed on the buses, I'm sure there's probably stories that these, that these great people have heard. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying not to curse, so please, give me a little bit here. But, I, I'm, well, I'm trying to be somewhat professional. But, it just, the stories that they probably have heard on the bus, they're, they're almost acting like the parents. And for you to not even acknowledge, "Hey, you know what, maybe we do need to do something more for them," because they're the connection. Kids get up, they go, "Hey, I'm going on the bus, I'm going to, I'm gonna see Ms. Mary on the bus today." Ms. Mary, guess what I did yesterday? They go to class, they have the aides that are all over here. "Hey, guess what I learned today in school? Hey, guess what I did here?" And you're treating them like the bottom of a totem pole. Why? That's what I want to know. Everybody should be treated the right way. They're not being treated right. And again, as a member myself of a union, I'm telling you right now, if I did this, I'd be like the biggest angel in the world, because they could easily say, "You know what, guess what?" That's what they would do. That's what they, that's what they can do. And then what are you gonna do? Everybody else has lives here, all the parents here have lives, but they're taking time out of their career, their lives, to take care of your children. The aides are doing it, and you're not doing anything to help them. So, what's gonna happen when they all do walk out? What would happen? Who are you gonna hire? I know for a fact CDL drivers are in, are in high demand. I know, I am a CDL driver. So, I know if every one of these bus drivers leaves right now, you cannot restock them. I'll tell you that right now. There ain't no way you're restocking them. So, you guys can do what you have to do, but I'm telling you right now, these guys, these are the foundation of this school district, and if you don't do something for them, I commend you guys for doing what you guys do. I really do. For you to still do what you're doing with no contract negotiation, no extension, and no, not even a, some type of resolve yet, I'll tell you right now, you guys are better than I am. I'm just saying, you guys gotta figure something out and get it done fast, because right now, I don't see one person right now that wants to continue operating this way. That's it.
Thank you, Sean. We, we hear you. At this time, I do have cards, but these are second timers, so we'll call them up at the next, um, public session. Um, at this time, could I get a motion to close the public?
So moved.
Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Can we take like a two-minute bathroom?
All right, we're gonna take a two-minute bathroom break. Uh, two-minute break, we'll be back, and we'll start voting on. First item up is the report of the superintendent.
I have ideas for this.
Good. Yeah, I want, yeah, I want to talk to you.
I have a close friend.
Oh, count them out a day, you have no idea.
Last year, we got a picture, this is this year.
But now, it's, 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 it has not got, it has, it has, it has.
I love your child. I was like, it's hard, I mean, it's hard, it's, I mean, it's, I'm just, it's, it's terrible.
I love your child.
I was like, it's hard, I mean, it's, I'm just, it's, it's terrible.
I love your child.
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 Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion approved. Could I get a motion to approve student activities and services, items one and two?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Harry and Nun, roll call.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion approved. Could I get a motion to approve human resources, items one through forty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Harry and Nun, roll call.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes to all abstain of one CPAG.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion approved. Could I get a motion to approve finance and facilities, items one through twenty-six?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question of one, when it, on twenty-five and twenty-six.
Is there going to be a motion? I thought there was going to be a motion.
That's what we're doing right now.
Oh, you're going to do it?
Yep. It's, he just called for one through twenty-six.
Okay, so the motion's embedded in twenty-six and twenty-five?
If you click one, you can see it on the right.
Okay, all right, it's not something we have to, okay, not, okay, I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Harry and Nun, roll call.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Abstained from twenty-two, yes to all the others.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion approved. Could, could I get a motion to approve special education, items one through seven?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Harry and Nun, roll call.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion approved. Can I have a motion to approve negotiations, items one and two?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a comment. Um, I just want to make sure with the solicitor here that if, that if in the contract it gives an hourly rate, one doesn't have to say prorated. It's assumed that it's going to be prorated.
I would say that's a conversation we should probably have an executive session, but the general answer to that would be, I want to make sure I understand your question. If there's an hourly rate of fifty dollars an hour, for example, you're saying if the employee only works half an hour, they'd get twenty-five dollars? Is that what the current practice in the district is? If the answer's yes, then yes.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make that, make sure. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Harry and Nun, roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Abstained from both one and two.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes. Motion approved. At this time, any new business from the board? Any new business from board members? Okay, Harry and Nun, going to move on. Could I get a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, Megan Watson?
No, this is going to be less fun because everybody left. All right. So I know we've beaten the lunch thing to death, but I'm just going to say again, the other, the other thing to think about, and I do appreciate the perspective that the reason that they can't, might not be able to do it the way that it was intended is because of staffing issues, but you have to remember, these kids are going to be in college in anywhere from one to four years. There is nobody handing them passes to go to the bathroom or telling them when to do things. They have to figure all of that out on their own. At some point, we have to start letting the kids do that before they get to college because otherwise they're just going to flounder. So my point is just, we need to allow these kids to make these decisions. It's one hour out of the day. So I just am hoping that that gets back to happening. Um, I'm gonna, Julie kind of was up here and kind of said what I was going to say about the LGBTQIA issues. I wanted to say to some of the adults in this room, get real. I mean, the issues that we're having in this district with LGBTQIA concerns are because the adults are afraid. They don't understand, and they are afraid. The kids aren't afraid. They get it. You walk into any school in this district, elementary, middle, or high school, they get it. They understand why you're asking them about pronouns. And if there's a sixth grader that doesn't, the point is that next to them, there's a sixth grader, that it matters a whole hell of a lot. And it means something to them when somebody asks them what their pronouns are. It means you see them, you respect them, and you are going to recognize them as having value. These kids get it. There are kids coming from homes in this district that their parents, they don't, they don't believe that, they believe that being LGBTQ is a sin. They're, guess what? Their kids don't. Our kids are getting it. The adults need to knock it off. They need to get real and knock it off and let these kids, let the kids control the conversation. That's all I wanted to say.
Dana Zelenchowski?
Hey, again. Okay, so first I have to say I have no idea what I said the last time I was up here, and I apologize. I literally sat there crying afterwards. Like, it's, it's, I totally blacked out. Um, but I do want to let you guys know, I'm not asked to work extra hours. I do it because I, I do love the kids. Like, I genuinely love these kids like they're my own children. I have a nephew who's autistic. He used to be in the district. They left the district. Um, like, the highlight of my morning, because it was my son's picture day, but I don't ever get to see my son in the morning because I have to be at the school by six forty-five. Not complaining by it. That was my choice. I accepted those hours. But I walked into our autism room, first thing I see, we have that little slither of a glass door. One of the kids make eye contact with me and goes, "Oh, Ms. Dana!" I walk in the room, and the first thing I hear this morning was, "You're my favorite." I am not his favorite because I'm his teacher or I'm this giant person in his life, but I listen to him. I hug him. He gives me side hugs. That's my buddy. He sends me emails with his pictures that he's making, and we talk, we conversate through that. "Thanks for the picture." "You're welcome, Ms. Dana." And it takes three days just to say thank you for a picture. Highlight of my life right there. Um, but I'm not asked to do extra. I do it because I can't picture my job being pushed onto somebody else, and I can't picture our kids being left in the school with nobody to take care of them. So we have a kid walking down a hallway who has no idea what's going on, and now they're by themselves. I can't, I couldn't picture doing that because I know me as a mom, I would lose my mind if I found out that my kid who had needed a one-on-one had nobody with them because we're short-staffed. That sounds like your problem, not mine. So that's why when I go home, I, I take my job with me. I have a bag that I bring to work and has all the kids' stuff that I know that I need so I can say, "Oh, yeah, put this person with that person." I am not a doctor. I am not the brightest person in the world. But, you know, that's my decision to do that. The other part of it is, I don't really, I honestly, I didn't go to the health committee meeting or whatever it was, but being a mom, and a very proud mom of the LGBTQ, I will be damned if I let someone tell me what I have to do with my son. My son's in fourth grade. He doesn't know anything besides, "Sis, he has a friend." That's all it is, and that's how it should be. He's nine years old. I don't, I've never had to explain to him, "This is what happens in our family," because my family's no different than your family. We just love each other, and that's all I care about. And if it makes a big difference to anybody in this district, who I am, who my son is, my daughter, shame on you, that's all you have to worry about. Um, when my daughter was a junior, I was trying not to go to this personal level, but when my daughter was a junior in the district, she got called out in the flickerball field, telling, another kid told her that she was an effing dyke. So you know how fast a mom, I didn't even think twice. I snapped in, came right back to the school. Ann Moore was phenomenal. She didn't even blink. When I walked in her office, I didn't even stop and say hi. I walked in the office because I was, obviously, I saw black. I, everybody was dead around me. My daughter was like, "Mom, I wasn't even upset about it." She goes, "I was just appalled that I'm a junior in high school and these kids still call me that." And that's a disgrace. It was an absolute disgrace. But the most that happened was she got slapped in the hand. Like, "Oh, that's not nice. Don't call her that." Because if that was me, I know I would have punched the kid in the face and it would have been really bad. That's just my opinion, because she went to college, ended up getting called a dyke again. Um, but we do have to be more accepting of things a hundred percent, absolutely, but please, for the love of God, don't send something home with my fourth grader, because I choose not to explain to him why someone's different than another person, because that's my job to do, not yours, not mine. If I feel like my kids want to be called something else, I will let you know that as their mom, as a fourth grader mom. Not saying middle school, high school, fourth grader mom. We see each other for who we are. I can literally ask my son a question and he'd be like, "I don't know what you're talking about." If I ask him what this, the gender of somebody was or what their nationality or their race was, he doesn't see it. And I, maybe you guys are probably thinking, "Oh, you're dumb then. You're blind. You don't see it." He really, genuinely doesn't. I can say to him, "Dean, what did, I don't even know, Joe look like today?" "Oh, Mom, the kid with the purple shirt?" I still get that response because he's nine. He's a kid. He is still a child. And that's how I want my son to be. Please don't expect him to be a high school student and he knows everything. Really doesn't. His math homework stumped me today, so. But, you know, just a little food for salt because again, I will reiterate that literally, my son's haircut is my whole day's pay. I'm just one person. I am probably the lowest-paid person in the district because I'm just a clerical assistant. I'm not even a secretary. I'm not with those people. So, that's it. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Dana. Uh, Dana?
Hey, there. A couple of follow-up. Thank you for directing me to the CPAG website. I'm on it, and I note that there's a vision, a vision statement, a mission statement, and a goals. Those goals do not meet the statutory requirements. Again, I'm asking that this board with the solicitor, look at the statutory requirements of what needs to happen and ensure that it happens. The goals are great. Improve communication between pit staffs and parents and parents, and provide training opportunities for families and staff. Nowhere in that goal does it have that the parents and the community are providing input to the school district on issues concerning students with disabilities. I further note that the CPAG page has a lot about classifications under an IEP. Students with five oh fours also have, are students with disabilities. They're not even mentioned on the CPAG page. So again, I'm asking that this board not give up your requirement. It's the board's requirement, not admin, to make sure that we have a valid and working CPAG. The fact that it took two and a half years to get goals that don't meet the statute is a little bit troubling to me. Second, we've talked in the past about the dress code, especially at the high school level. We always say that it's going to be looked at, it's going to be examined. When? Is there a committee that's looking at it? What students are going to be on it to have input? When you look at this dress code and you go to the local stores, go to Walmart, Target, Kohl's, the outlet stores, JCPenney, most of the clothes that's available to purchase for females does not meet this district's dress code. What are we doing as, as a district to tell our young females that we understand that? When they're told on the first day of school that if they don't meet it, they're going to be handed a T-shirt? I've told my daughter, "Don't take the T-shirt. Get suspended. I'm good with that." Until this board comes up with a policy that works in light of the clothing that's available for purchase, we have a problem. We have a problem that the dress code is not uniformly enforced. There are people that have different body shapes that are often dress-coded because the clothes don't fit the same way as someone else. We need to look at that. We need to look at the disparity in which teachers are giving the dress codes and how often, and to what type of students. Next question. There is a high school play that's going on in the fall. My question for this board is why doesn't our supervisor of visual and performing arts, why is he not the one that's overseeing it and approving it and having input in it? Why does it go outside of him? Casey is very educated and he knows what he's doing. He does it for all the middle schools. He does it for the elementary schools, but all of a sudden we get to the high school and the supervisor for visual and performing arts isn't involved in approving or reviewing the play? Why? And what can be done so that we have consistency and uniformity, right? Why isn't that being done? That's it.
And the dress code is SACC's?
All right. Thanks, Dana. I think, uh, as a board, we probably should, um, probably add the, two of those items, the, um, the CPAG and the dress code to the, uh, committee meeting, probably for SACC. If that makes sense?
CPAG be IA or SACC?
I think that should be IA.
It should be IA, okay. All right, IA for CPAG and, um, and dress code for SACC?
Yes.
I don't know, any, any response regarding the, um,
I don't even know what the policy is.
The, uh, the play, the, uh, performing arts, supervisor of performing arts. I don't know if anyone has a comment or?
My best answer tonight is I don't have an answer nor prepare to answer that question tonight, given the nature of the, of the question on the spot. I, that would be my, my pure honesty for that. And Casey, I'm, would not want to put Casey on the spot there. You know, the man's trying to work here tonight. He's up at ten o'clock. My man giving his best shot here. So I have no answer for that, and that's an honest answer for you right now, okay? You know, I can't, I, I don't think I can promise that just because you asked that question at the microphone tonight, given we're already well into the school year, that would be a restructure of, 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 we would not normally restructure supervision, um, you know, early October. That would not be what we would do. Uh, whether, that would be, I would respectfully disagree that we would do something like that. Uh, we have our marching orders, we have our charge. Um, no, that, that would not be something I would be inclined to do right now, no. Um, whether I disappoint you or not, that would not be something I would normally entertain, um, on September twenty-seventh. About a request to restructure, no.
Thanks, Jack. Uh, Ron Luccherini?
Real quick word about the dress code. I agree. Uh, it's humiliating as a teacher to tell a twelve, thirteen-year-old girl that you got to get in the office because your shoulder's showing, you know? Anyway. Mrs. Cozempel's a really interesting person. She, she's added a new twist. She, she led right into what I was talking about, stupid statements being accepted without any validity, without any rational, uh, objective facts to support it. But, uh, she adds a new twist. She's able to just lie. I think if, like, a student wrote a paper on the, uh, last election and they were to put down, "I think Donald Trump won because I said so," but they shouldn't fail. They have to pass because they said so. Because Mrs. Cozempel is the judge, the jury, the lawyer. I just talked to two people on my cellphone through text messaging, and they told me this violation, ethical violation thing is still on, all right? And personally, I was called by two people who filed these violations and asked if I would go and, uh, to this particular hearing or whatever it's called. I don't know if it's trial or whatever it is, all right? So, that's one thing. But let me just ask the new student representative, because if you're all going to sit there and listen to this nonsense of hers that hiring a superintendent or attempting to hire a superintendent by telling everyone who it's going to be and who you want as a superintendent, and you're the Board of Education president, and it's been proved, it's in emails, there's numerous witnesses who she told outside of emails, uh, and it's your best friend, and the superintendent who's in place at that time, Ms. Angelina, has not even retired yet, announced his retirement. According to Ms. Cozempel, that's okay. I want you to answer if you think it's okay after I get done, because we can't have back and forth. Some people can have back and forth, but some others can't. But we're the Equity District, and Mrs. Gallinero is telling you, don't answer. Uh, uh, we just got done talking about how the high school students are, um, mature and able to handle, um, many facets of, um, life that you would, uh, think, you know, belong to adults. But you don't have to answer it if you don't want, uh, you know, it's up to you. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say was, the, the others' response that she came up here and said, you get, when you run for office, you get checks and you just cash them. And you don't have to answer to anybody. You get checks from the attorney representing the school board, the business administrator moves the date of the RFP to another date so that the, uh, attorney doesn't have to show that he gave those particular donations to you, and that's okay. You just get ten thousand dollars and it just comes, or five thousand, and you put up signs and you do whatever you want. That's Mrs. Cozempel's statement tonight, okay? And it feeds right into what I was saying, the conversation what I had with Joe Bolendorf seven years ago. That stupidity is an accepted answer, okay, in this district. An accepted response. You could say just about anything, and it's a disgrace. And then, the other part I didn't tell about, uh, this to, to the audience yet, so I told Joe Bolendorf that it trickles on down to the students. And today I had some test scores sent to me by various and sundry people, a group of lawyers who are well-versed in reading those kinds of statistics from the states and some other people. I looked at them four years, five years ago because I thought the principal at Orchard Valley was a disgrace and, uh, was insulting my intelligence every time we had a faculty meeting. So I looked at the scores when I, sort of, when I retired, which was like maybe four or five years ago, and I couldn't believe it. You know, thirty-four, forty-three percent proficient. That means only forty-three percent of the kids are proficient, meaning the, the bare minimum. And today I got stuff that wasn't, that didn't say proficient. It said meeting the state's standards, just meeting them, not excelling, all under fifty percent. In, you know, uh, maybe it wasn't every grade, but these were just random things that people sent me. So it does have an effect, and people like Ms. Cozempel, I consider very dangerous to education.
Thank you, Mr. Luccherini.
Oh, wait a minute. And her friends running on children first, and the friends sitting up here.
Doctor, thank you. Uh, Leslie, Mary Bim?
Hello. Good evening. Um, so it was brought to my attention, I know we're talking about the support staff, yet on October fifth, there's apparently a hiring event for, I think this is called ESS, Everyday Counts. So it looks to me like it's a temporary company coming in here, um, substitute teachers, I understand, but aid positions? Why are we having to outsource to aid positions? And per my knowledge, they're getting offered more money than if we hire them in-house. So I guess that's a little bit of a conflict. So that was, uh, one thing I wanted to bring up. Um, secondly, I'm going to kind of piggyback, maybe I should say, everything that Ron just said, but I just want to, um, point out, on August twenty-ninth, cases, two cases were sent to the judge. Um, they are going to, they are going to be scheduled for a hearing and they will go to court. So my question to the BA, have we stopped on the board paying, uh, fees for the attorneys for the past president and the legal fees of what's going on so we can know whether or not we're paying them so there can, we can shed some light on whether it's still going on or not? That's my one question to you. Um, the other thing that she said that was really concerning amongst others, we know why we're going there, we know what happened, and we can, she can talk all she wants about bringing things up that we need to get back to the education of the students. That should be first and foremost. However, when one takes money and that, from somebody and then appoints that same person, that's a pay-to-play. That's a huge no-no. And that's written right there in your bylaws. That has nothing to do with me. That's there. So that should never have happened. And she also talked about the people who were elected up here. Well, let's not forget, the people that chose to interview, um, for an appointment because we lacked the positions because one person stepped down on her own accord, because she was embarrassed that the president wouldn't step down, so that was one position. And then over time, there were other positions. So now we do have people that came, many interviewed, and then these people, they chose to be here. So, a little bit different about somebody coming up and saying, "Oh, you're part of the union. We need you. We need you. We need you. You're going to run for us." Um, so I just want to say, there's a huge difference in deciding what you want to do. The people that are here have been coming to the meetings and they chose to do this and go for the interview and prove that they were ready for the position. So I disagreed with that comment, and I think that was really rude to you guys, and I apologize for that. Um, and in addition, it was interesting, um, and this is just a side note, that when you had your two-minute, um, break between meetings, there seemed to be, um, children's first all collected right up here, and I guess Mrs. Jackson was having like a little pow-wow with them and Julie to see where we stand and what's going to go on through the election. But it's somewhat of an embarrassment, if you ask me. There are people that really do care. The people that have come up here that they're saying, "Oh, we've questioned, questioned, questioned." No, we just, there's right and wrong, and, um, quote-unquote, per that person, a political operative. That's not true. I don't do that with the school board. I've been coming for the right reasons, and that's to make sure that we're all transparent and we're doing the right thing. So, thank you.
You could answer that question about the, uh, the BA? For, I mean, for the, for the, uh, the payment of the legal fees?
With the assistance.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Oh, oh, wait, wait.
Aren't the bills approved by a board, by the board, by any payments to the?
Mary, I'm assuming that you're talking about the ethics cases?
Yes.
Okay. So they're referred through our insurance. So attorneys that are appointed through our insurance handle those. I haven't gotten correspondence recently, so I don't know one way or another, but it does tend to be delayed when it's going through insurance. And just to clarify on the ESS for the assistants, we're, it's not outsourcing. It's, uh, so we use ESS for sub-teachers and sub-assistants. So we're not looking for permanent, permanent people through there.
I would take that line, yeah.
Megan, also, just to clarify, so I spoke about myself in terms of that one question you had about what's being asked in interviews. In all my years here, I've never been in a room with any other leader where that was ever on, yeah, I'm not saying it's not. Listen, you know, yeah, you might know more than me, but I'm saying is, for clarity, I've never been in a room with any of our colleagues ever in my entire life where that was ever asked by anyone or I ever saw it on any interview document from anyone, so. Oh, application. That, I, I'm sorry. I sensed you were talking about the interview process. Got it. Application. Understand?
No, all right. Got it. Oops, sorry, Jack. Could I get a motion to close the public?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, so moved. Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, folks.